Yeah, the one.
Hello. Hello.
Yep.
Hello. Hmm. 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 Meet this and start the recording.
You don't have a budget, you can see flag.
For the Sletman's meeting, it's up to you. I have a little one. You can skip it if you want. All right, Nick can hold it.
Oh my God. Let's get there. I was just getting excited about that, but okay.
I didn't even keep a copy from Asof. Do you guys have the general assistance stuff?
Um, yeah, you, if you could give that in the package. Maybe.
It's all on my page.
I'm there now.
Right. I mean, you have a lot more information in the packet, but this is just a breakdown of the changes.
Are we like at the library now?
Yeah.
Okay. Are we making motions around that?
That's not.
Are we making motions around this?
No, it's just a public hearing to talk about it, answer questions.
All right.
But you have to call it.
Talking, right? Because that's my first one for the, I don't know.
You can call the hearing to order when you're ready.
They will call the hearing. The audit, the general assistants. Uh, so we have the reference sheet here. Box of county.
Do we, do you want to compare to the current one?
Yeah, the one.
Can you grab the order?
Hello.
Good evening.
I guess some of your audience.
Yeah, they have a meeting here tonight. Close with the insulation, insulation over there. Oh, that's a fella.
I think this is the current. Yeah, everything's on there. You know, you look at your debt. Here, if we take it a shot.
Yeah.
The past, Aaron was gonna be here.
Yeah, looking to move out loans.
He gets a permit for someone else.
I don't think it was his. I think he's, I remember actually he was cooking for this one.
Yeah. You know, I said 2025, 2026 has gone up a little bit. One or three thing. Overall maximums. $2,024 for a family of five. That's probably six. How do you make sense of the run down? General assistance, they cover food, heating, housing, personal care, household supplies. Supplements for households of children under five. Dr. Pete. The funerals, burial and cremation. Burial $1,620. Cremation $1,025.
If you qualify.
Yeah. Everything on here is if you qualify, right?
Hmm.
Mileage is up four cents. Was 50 cents, it's up to 54.
Now, what is that? When do you use mileage? Do you know?
No, I don't. Not necessarily good work, customer or something for something. Maybe.
Isn't that under personal care? That you're looking for the mileage level.
Yeah, but when would we reimburse my, or pay for someone's mileage? I don't know.
Those are, yeah, personnel, personal care and household supplies is what that's under. You understand copyright? Yeah.
Maybe if you had a member in the household that was in the hospital in the list, maybe, you know, something like that.
Right, I guess. I was wondering if somebody needed to have somebody pick up medication for them or something.
Yeah, that's something like that, yeah.
That's all I can think of.
Unless it's instead of gas, we would pay, I don't know.
Right. Electric didn't even go off that last time. That's crazy. I don't actually do electric sound off.
It's without hot water.
That's your hot water. 9963.
No, that's supposed to walk. I'm just going to dig one.
Right. In two. January 2.5, February 2.5. That doesn't go off either. So utilities stuff didn't seem to go off at all. But this isn't mobile.
Yeah, not a lot.
Like for this one, I was looking at the 12, 1050, 1050. Not a whole lot changed in that one either.
I did, I thought I did see it.
Not much anyways.
Qualified for general assistance, see if there's. They have to put an application in.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Did you guys do that training? Or has it happened yet?
I did the other day, but I didn't.
You should, because there's probably going to be some cases coming.
Okay, I'll go look at that. I thought the training.
They said they would, if we wanted them, they would meet with us.
There were two trainings. There was the same training in October, there was another one in December, I thought. I don't know if that was the same thing.
I would take some.
Well, I don't know if that was a GA training, the same.
One in December.
Okay, so that is the one. Yeah, I was planning on doing the one in December.
I forwarded an email today about SNAP benefits. There, there will be no SNAP benefits released in November unless they, um, adopt a budget.
Okay.
So it said that people may be applying for general assistance.
They said they'd meet with us if we wanted to.
Yeah, they probably should.
And I figured that'd probably be a good idea when Nick and Aaron both knew.
I have that package in my truck. I didn't bring that one in, but I'm pretty sure.
Just have to see when you guys could do it.
Oh, actually, it's on the paper right here.
When they're available.
DA 2 test, GA training, schedule 2025, GA continental training, December 9.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's the one that they're trying to do then.
Yeah, because you really haven't handled any cases for a while.
I haven't for a quarter mile. We just didn't sue once.
Can you explain what that might have looked like? Like, without this whole remains, like what, what they?
Well, you have to, they have to make up an application and you just both have to put everything down.
Show proof of all income, all bills.
Bills and banking and.
You can, I know prior Sletman went to their house even.
I know Lee's been to the house before.
Susan.
Yeah. Just to make sure that this was it, what they're asking for.
Leases if they're renting and.
Okay. Yeah, I'm sure it'll be good.
Yeah, it would be.
We don't have much of a budget this year either.
Probably, uh, it says that maybe sometime in December or something within. Happens over.
May, can you explain that statement that we don't have much of a budget?
I gave you my sheet.
Oh, yeah.
My budget sheet, but let me look.
The sheet that I left in my truck.
Around a thousand, isn't it?
Well, I guess I was just trying to, I was just trying to understand what the difference between our budgets versus this general assistance sheet.
Oh, we had two thou, oh, we did. We did raise it to 2,000. Usually it's 1,000. That's good.
Yeah, I think we did.
The state reimburses us so much, 50% up to so much that we give. And then 70% after we meet a set of values.
Okay. Kind of don't get that. So like somebody, or like the very first column, like I guess weekly heat, if they qualify for weekly heat, $184.
Normally people will ask for emergency help, like we need oil for our oil tank.
So it's just really a temporary ask. It's not something you're going to see them showing up at your door.
Usually, usually, yeah.
Okay, okay.
So.
So it doesn't turn into $18,000.
Hopefully not.
Okay.
We had a kind of a big case last year, but. Um.
That should be rare. What is the requirement to meet that if it's asked for and they meet all the qualifications? Is it just something you don't, you don't deny?
If, if they meet the, the income requirements and, yeah.
But we only get partial reimbursement from government?
Mm-hmm.
That's interesting. I would have thought it was fully required. That's hard to, you know, you can do the budget for something like that is look at past records then.
Yeah, but you never know, like, there's a shutdown rate now and people aren't going to get money and, or food, whatever SNAP is.
Right.
But several times, the most kind one is heating oil, isn't it?
Mostly, yeah.
Go put $50 worth of heating oil in their tank or something to get them by or.
Heating and usually left up to be.
Less.
Generally, they should have some cause for income, but maybe they're waiting for a couple weeks till they get their check or something. So usually helping them through that line or something. A lot of, a lot of legwork to go through just to get that, that little, little bit of loan.
Yeah.
Assistance, okay.
And you guys can call the state with any questions. They'll walk you through everything.
Okay. But that must be what we've done though, as far as that budget that you said we got, it's based on historical data?
Yeah, until last July, June.
Right, okay. Somewhat based on historical data? Okay.
But like I said, they, they reimburse us a good portion, so.
Yeah.
I actually have a check in the drawer. I was asking the auditor how to receipt for it because it's for June. For money we had spent. I just want to make sure I do it right because it's prior year.
Oh, yeah.
It's like a reimbursement of $805 for that, the June case we had.
Was that?
It was, um.
Assistance that actually was utilized in the June month?
Yep, it was temporary housing.
Oh, wow.
Steve?
Good evening.
Nice big hall we got going on.
Yeah, less echo here. I guess the high school.
Is it?
Oh, yeah.
Wow.
Are they carrying?
It's going on tonight.
Oh, yeah, right. Not surprised.
You okay then?
Are we going to transition?
So.
Not yet.
Huh?
Not yet.
So do you have a break for a couple minutes?
Yeah.
I have something for open session that was supposed to get on the agenda, but somehow that message can't get passed off. So I just thought I'd give you the information.
Yeah.
It's something that's been discussed.
Thank you.
Somewhat credibly about having, uh, rules for the confirmation. Somehow the message didn't get.
I didn't see that. What? I didn't see that. No, that's what I'm saying is, is.
I thought the secretary was going to take care of that, that didn't happen.
I thought that was dropped, no? By the board?
What board?
Sletman.
No, it was, uh, delayed for another meeting and we didn't have a meeting in September, so it wasn't brought to the Sletboard in September. Our next meeting was in October and that's when we, uh, October 8th, that's when we discussed it.
I, I thought the Slatman word said focus on working on the plan and.
I don't know that one. I mean. I didn't make it to that one. No. So, yeah, hopefully this year we'll have a few. Things coming our way. I thought there's a lot of stuff here that GA doesn't cover. With one barefoot. Right?
I would say.
Man, I'm covered barefoot.
That's what I was asking about the mileage. I don't know.
Right.
Yeah. Yeah, I did take someone to go get a prescription the other day.
I'm thinking that must be what personal care is. That mileage for personal care. It's gotta be something like that.
Let's say mostly it's the food, the nose. Heating. Rent. Personal care, what would come under that? Like.
Descriptions and shampoo.
Shampoo, soap, anything. I should do that for food bank.
Right. And household supplies, personal care and household supplies. I could do anything.
Yeah, Bob Rivers passed away last week. I didn't know that.
Who?
Bob Rivers. I didn't hear that either.
Oh. Really? It's still a punishment?
Yeah.
Okay.
Last Thursday, he passed away.
He was sick. Huh.
Wow. You should wonder if something in the water up there, you got Jimmy Wallace, you know, Alton Dwight, yellowed up the other way.
Yeah, I knew it.
That story. Jimmy Wallace, his wife's gone, no cancer.
All right.
You have to get in the water.
You're in the water. You know, I mean, we got, we got like three actually in my one well, one property.
Overall maximum, that must mean the maximum of any of this. Here. Housing, food.
Lynn, is there a. Higher authority that reviews those applications that people submit? Not us, right?
Oops. You, you decide. You guys decide with, and you get advice from the state.
Okay.
I know when I worked for West Paris, the, West Paris, the town manager would, he was very easy. He'd help out everybody. Just about if they applied, but.
Well, it's nice and all, but if you don't. Budget for that, that must.
But here, we've been very strict.
I mean, we do have that much, certain amount of money set aside, so obviously.
But you're allowed to go over that. Winter roads and general assistance, you're allowed to go over.
Okay.
And in emergency.
All right. Don't want to leave him there freezing. He's very housing involved. I don't even know why they're being, being. I don't know. You guys are talking about something.
Regulars.
Something that occurred in June and it was related to housing, huh?
Hmm, yeah. We had to provide housing for someone temporarily. Couple of weeks.
Well, if you can get my house, that it's not affordable, could they assist us really put it off, confirm?
Is that what the housing maximum, this one is? That's what that must fall under?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
Got you, that's, yeah, right, this place.
But you would also refer them to agencies like R C A L who offers housing and food and whatever. Services and food bank and. Community concepts.
Right, that would be.
The parents.
Yeah, the parents, right.
Actually, yeah, relatives can be used.
Who's the momma there?
Certainly plenty of options. Hopefully, they should be.
Do you have any motion, Lynn, that's up this?
No, not yet. It's on the Slatman's agenda.
Oh. Yeah. Sorry.
Hi, Ben.
Hmm. Spider.
Hi.
Hi, in the corner.
Yep.
Lynn?
Yes.
Um. Should we give her that fee, you know, it's on the agenda about the TV that we talked about the last meeting?
You can. They, they approve for you to purchase it already.
And the Austin electronics. Are we talking about those tonight? I don't.
I was, that came in after I had the agenda ready, but I was gonna, you know, talk about that during, um, treasure, but.
Okay, well, we don't need to. I guess what I was trying to figure out is, are we, did it go on it?
On where they, it's already approved.
Oh, it is, okay.
Yeah. Six thirty-two.
You want to start?
Yeah.
Give a call maybe to the auditor. Six thirty. Just get the, please just flag. Okay, approval minutes over October seventh, twenty twenty-five, Slatman's meeting in October ninth, twenty twenty-five, public hearing.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes for the Slatman meeting on October seventh and, uh, October ninth, public hearing.
Can I favor, second it?
Yeah.
Warrant seven includes FEMA.
Here you go.
Whoops. That was out. I don't know. No. Yeah, approve warrant seven includes FEMA reserve, pavement reserve, and APA reserve expenditures. Payroll warrants, October eighth, twenty twenty-five, and October fifteenth, twenty twenty-five.
Make a motion to approve warrant seven payroll warrants. For October eighth, twenty twenty-five, through October fifteenth, twenty twenty-five.
Suck a bit, all favor. Okay, reports, I wish you tend to direct report. Anything here? Road commissioners report. Pavement on Pratt Hill Road, Davenport Road, Hills and Davenport Road has been completed. We plan to do shoulder work on the three roads soon. Work has been finished on Lardell Pond, the Boy Road and Moses Young Road except degrading. We will be moving to Town Farm Road Hill and Swan Pond Road next. What's going on at Swan Pond, Ben?
Uh, from the FEMA thing, we're gonna be putting some surface gravel there, there it is. Thank you, I hope you.
Thank you.
We're gonna be working on Pratt Hills. Possibly for tomorrow, we're gonna be putting some stone on the edges. In the water areas where the water runs off.
Yeah.
And we're gonna be fixing those driveways with a stack up more.
Yep.
Um. I believe we're gonna be moving there tomorrow, but moving the excavator will go on Town Farm Hill tomorrow. But I don't think we'll be doing anything there. We'll be moving, we'll be working on Pratt Hill.
What specifically are we working on, on Town Farm?
Oh, down by, uh, Tides driveway, that whole hill had washed out with FEMA.
Yeah.
Change color.
We're gonna be cleaning that ditch, fixing the shoulder. We gotta replace the big coal up there.
Yeah.
Um. There's quite a little bit there, and also we've got work on the other side of the hill. Where the FEMA went washed out. I'm not gonna break up any tie, even though we've allotted us some money for paving. I'm not gonna actually take up any pavement now. It's getting too late. And we don't wanna deal with near dirt or water. But we'll do a lot of the shoulder work and some coal work.
We have, is there a following extension to be able to use that, Lynn?
We're at June of twenty-six.
Okay, that's what I thought, yeah.
Well, we'll be going over all that, so we'll, where we are. We're doing a few projects that are still coming out of some summer road money. We got that FEMA money.
Yeah.
Lynn's doing a good job keeping it all separate.
Well, I have eighty-five thousand eight seventy-one left from the FEMA reimbursement.
Yes, we put into the summer road money.
Yeah.
Yeah, but we don't have anything big planned out of that. Just some maintenance things, but I gotta get in here with you to order a couple of saws. Um. I'm putting up the narrow bridge sign on. One lane road on Pratt Hill where that's narrow. We'll put a sign on each side that just indicates it's a one lane. Just to. It's narrow. And if the signs are there, they, they won't be so last to try to lean, but, I mean, it's been like that in years.
Mm-hmm.
We've got some work we've gotta do on the shoulder of it, but I'm not sure how soon I can get these guys in there to do it. Just on the header on the big cowl and on the long side.
Is that the part that didn't get paid?
Yes.
Yeah.
We buddied against that, because that was the base already put in.
Yeah.
So in the future, when we overlay Pratt Hill, we'll go right over that.
Yeah. Good.
I forgot to mention, why we're over here is because they're working on insulation over at the town hall. And earlier, there's like a bunch of floaties floating around and. So we don't need to breathe all that stuff.
No, you walk over and you feel like it's up your, you know, it wasn't in your eyes.
You want to have an intimate setting tonight.
So. Constable report, nothing probably.
Nope.
CEO report.
Nope.
Nothing. Animal control.
You do have one of those.
Yep. Four calls this month.
All the same person?
No, I don't think so. I don't know.
Doesn't say that.
They must be taking cats. No. No, the dog is. Other than.
Yes.
Heard a cow.
Yes.
The goats have lost this month.
Yeah, well, we had seven, we were down the road.
Five one, what?
No.
Social report.
Here's the thing. So we were awarded a grant for cameras. So, we were awarded a grant for cameras. Um, it's for just about three thousand dollars. Neil Austin had given a, an estimate or quote. You guys just have to decide whether you want one in the town office. He was adamant that one was in the town office, but I don't know if there's sound. Even if we had it facing away from the customer's information, I don't know if there's sound, and I'm always asking data burst and things like that, so that's up to you, but because Neil said he would have access to the, the cameras.
Okay.
But he was planning on the outside having one facing each door to buildings. The assessors are coming Monday. The process to commit tax is gonna be longer than normal because of the the per, the increase in values, whatever formula he uses. He does plan on coming to the November fifth meeting to talk to you guys.
Okay, great, good. Can we go back to cameras? Because I remember why I asked you earlier, because I had actually followed up on a question to him that you and I had been discussing. Like with whether or not they require power or anything like that. Um, and he stated that they are powered through cat six cable, so I'm hoping there is, is there, do you know if there's an attic in here? Okay, thank God. So, yeah, they're gonna, they're gonna fish cables around, but they don't, none of these cameras need power. Um, they're, except for one location, so we need to find a place for the hub in the town office, so the cables can go back to that. Um. Actually, for my text message, I was going to, to remember what the far was. Um, he, he, he recommended a, a PC monitor, just the, we have a spare monitor for a computer.
Just a laptop?
Okay, so nothing like that.
A spare one? I mean, we have our three, we can't use our normal computers?
Maybe you could, I'll have to find out. Then basically, he recommends having a monitor so you can look at what's on the cameras, like if, if you're here. Yeah. And a UPS battery backup unit in case the power goes out, the cameras would stay functioning for a duration of time.
I have some of those.
Great. Otherwise, he said a lockbox to protect the recorder. I'm assuming that means in case somebody wanted to take the camera because they didn't like what was on the camera, not for the show.
Oh, for the outside?
I guess, but as long as the bottom line is, is the question I asked him was, for the time being, can we use everything that you've given us in the quotes? As you quoted it, and he said yes. So, the only question I really have is, you've got the USB, great. Where, if, do we need a separate monitor? I, I've got, I've got one, I could donate if I had to, so we'll be fine there, so. The only other part that I'm waiting for his response on now is what you just mentioned, what, which is, I'll follow it on the audio.
Yeah.
Because that would be, I wouldn't, I don't like the idea of a camera picking up audio in here, that would be a problem, so. I'll get back to you.
I bet they could go and go one of these three.
I would think so. But there's a recorder box that would go in there, so maybe if it was in the, I mean, I'm just assuming that there, because it's more private than up here.
Remember when we had the camera at the salt shed, we had a separate laptop?
Mm-hmm.
Of you.
He never did it to work.
It did for a while, but.
Is there a charge?
For a while, like maybe for a week?
Do you charge you guys, like, buy it to watch all your stuff?
That, that would be the only question I have to follow up on.
Yeah, I don't know why he would have to watch.
Yeah.
Just to make sure it's working, I guess.
I hired him once to do it, so I was on, um, actually, I used to care up in Bottom Harbor, I had to pay him so much an hour, so I was.
That is something you want to talk about, who's in charge of monitoring it and.
Well, the place that I work, they just have a monitor on the manager's desk, and it's always there going if they ever want to look at something. You know, I mean, during the day when you're here, but I mean, often, obviously, somebody else would have to review, think if something happened.
He's at that school thing right now.
Yeah, I figured.
We just have to initial that.
Oh, one more thing. I mentioned to the rec committee, well, Becky, that in the past, they talked about mailing the ad hoc, the comprehensive plan surveys with the tax bill, so I asked her about it the other day, and are you guys okay with that? If they want to mail them? She said it's eight pages, I'd have to buy more stamps with the tax bills.
It wouldn't be eight pages if it'd be pieces of paper, it's double sided. For four?
Well, anything over.
Yeah, right. Well, I didn't know what you wanted to discuss this, but yeah. Um, can you use bulk mailing?
No.
Okay.
Not for tax bills.
Okay, so, how much is this likely to cost for like an extra, uh, first class stamp on an envelope? For how many, how many get sent out?
Twelve hundred.
What?
Twelve hundred.
What, what is the document that we're trying to send with it?
The, um, comprehensive plan survey of the town to see what the residents or taxpayers would like to see for the future of the town.
Got questions in there, asking questions.
Because we didn't budget anything in our budget to mail it, because we said it could be mailed with the tax bills.
Is it a?
But if it's four pages, it's not so bad.
Yeah, copy of the, you can look at it, please, give a copy of the video, if you can look at it.
Well, I guess I was just wondering, they don't make our electronic version of this thing?
Well, no, we can do it.
Or is this something?
We can do it electronically, having it distributed equitably to people in town.
Is this something that we create? Like, the document you're talking about, oh, okay.
We, we, we took the document from two thousand eight.
Yep.
And it's one of the initial comprehensive plan meetings last winter, we went through it, we only went halfway through it and, and then kind of got dropped, so we've been working on this over the summer, and we changed a lot of stuff to kind of update, and we tried to simplify it and drop various things, so it's a little bit shorter than it was.
Yep.
I mean, we could just offer it on the website, but.
Nobody's gonna do that, I can get.
Absolutely not.
No, no, I, I respect that, um.
Dana?
Can you make it available electronically with a side note, that you may pick up a paper copy at the town office?
A short, or a short note with the taxes that say, this is available here online. If you want a printed copy, stop by the town office, like a little note in the mail, rather than before paid paper.
It's up to the selectmen, and you guys should actually see the survey before you send it out.
I would, I would absolutely want to look at it before, when.
And tax bills are going out probably right around the next meeting, hopefully.
That's why the decision, you know, the whole thing was gonna be done soon.
I think that is worth it. Unfortunately, you don't even have the final plan done yet.
Final what?
It's not done.
Why?
The editing's not done, the formatting was all off of what she said.
What would you think would work, Leanne?
I think a note in the tax bill saying it's available online for at voting. Could it be there? Why not?
Well.
Well, the tax bills are gonna go out.
I'll probably gonna be putting the tax bills in envelopes at the election.
Right.
Oh, oh, okay.
I like that idea, it would be fantastic, you get people fill it out.
Coming to vote.
Right.
Like, one thought that I have that comes to mind is I mean, not trying to delay progress, but I'm wondering what the difference is between having it now versus having it at the next June meeting or something that, or, for the next election, and.
Well, that means that the comprehensive plan is gonna move forward without information from the town, and how they'd like to see the town develop. And the, the last plan was two thousand eight based upon data from the year two thousand. And things are changing, and it's, you know, I started trying to get this plan off the, off the ground a year ago, June.
Leanne, what do you think about a four pages, double sided versus just
Three.
Too, well, no, you said eight pages, but if it's double sided, it's four pages, right?
Right. Right, although I'm, I'm looking here in the, it goes up to page ten on the, on the, um, the document. Um.
It's a long.
Yeah, I. Well, that, well, that was the other question, you know, we, we, we went through this in great detail, spent a lot of time on it. But we didn't create Genovo, we just edited what was there, like, all these questions like, you know, um, why you were in Har- Hartford, something about yourself, your age, and whether you're working, and what you'd like to see in the town, that and, you know, what kinds of changes would you like to see, and what do you, how do you evaluate all the different, um, services in the town, and the employees in the town, there's so many different detailed things in there um, to kind of guide the, the future, but you know, it's something that's been worked on now since, you know, maybe March, February, March.
Yeah.
Lee?
I just want to say that, um, I was saying at town expense, some years ago, to a all-day workshop in Portland, uh, dealing with the subject of social marketing, which means surveys and stuff like that. The only things they told me was that, um, sending a survey out in the mail is oh, I don't know what the percentage was, very low. Uh, like, low effectiveness, um, you know, percentage of effectiveness. If they said, they said was that if you want to have a survey, really work, react, actually take it up. And that's what they did in the nineteen ninety-two comprehensive plan, people went door to door, but the population has improved, increased since then, and we don't have the volunteers.
I don't think so, it was just, like you said, a notice, you can get it online, and then at the election ask them, have you gotten your form? Here.
That was the other option, was to have it available at the election.
I think your greatest chance of people getting it.
Because then there's at least some interaction.
Right.
But just a pile of them on the table.
But I think the selectmen should approve it before it's given out.
I, I think we should, I also think that we're cutting it very close to having it on a table, right, at the election?
The election's the fourth, you're meeting the fifth.
Right.
Well, okay, so now the select board is approving the steps along the way that the comprehensive plan is taking, like setting up.
You are advisory to the board.
What?
All committees are advisory to the board, they make the decisions.
So, okay, I'll just.
I think that if it's a, a distributed document, it would make sense for us to sign up on it. But I guess.
It's a comprehensive plan committee's document.
Mm-hmm.
It's not the select board's document.
But it's being distributed to the town.
You're advisory to the board.
What if we send it out in the Hartford news?
But basically, the committee's going to say, this is our findings from the survey. Which is, it's what you're going to, you need that information, so it's not so much approving. They're gonna give you information, the surveys say I don't think we need to micromanage that, they're gonna, they're just getting information for you.
Understood, but I guess, like, what if there was a question that would be, that was asked in a way that we didn't agree that it should be asked in a certain way? That's, that's the oversight, I feel like, that would be necessary.
No, I guess I trust the committee, because most of the people.
Right, right, because the committee members are such rogues.
Yeah, they are, yeah.
They never know what they're gonna come up with, some kind of horrible.
I wouldn't, I wouldn't say it's about trust or lack thereof, but I think no different than a business, you know?
I guess, yeah.
I'm doing it right now.
Well, I think that would be a, a good idea.
Now, it's my question, can they receive it electronically and without having a meeting, sign up on it? Can they, if nobody did, and say we approve this, and sign out of it, like that, especially then? To sign up on it?
So, do you want to give us some specific guidance on what kinds of things need to be approved by this select board before we do anything?
No, this is kind of.
Because that, this is, this is a whole new concept to me.
Yeah, me too.
Because the, the, I've worked on the planning board for over a decade, and we don't come to you and ask if we can do things.
You're a board, that's a board, this is an ad hoc committee.
Well. The board goes, no, none of mine. I'll do whatever helps. Becky and I worked on this.
Yep.
And we adapted the existing questions to make it simpler and to not ask things that are none of our business, like, do you work?
Right.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
We took out
This is, this is conversation, first of all. Now, Becky, this is a conversation, it's not, I'm just, I want to understand the best process and, and come to an agreement here, obviously, but I think that, um.
You have it, you should have it now in your email.
Okay.
Can we look at it in open session?
Yeah.
Yeah, we could.
Yeah.
Wait, you can't make your decision in open session. You have to look at stuff, though, but you could vote to add it to the agenda.
You mean, they, they're not allowed to make decisions, or they're not expected to make decisions?
No, they're not expected.
They're not expected is not the same as allowed. Well, supposed to is different than expected or allowed. Not allowed, but can't do it, but if you're not expected to, you may to take a decision, or they not.
Well, they can add it to the agenda.
Well, we won't get it out in time for.
No, to this agenda, they can vote during the meeting.
I have to, it's gonna be agenda.
Kathy can look at it, it's fine.
All right. All right, I'll just send it through.
I think, um, is it over five sheets of papers, extra twenty-nine cents?
That's, yeah, that's kind of where I was, five minutes ago. What, what does it take? And what is our, what do we agree on is the best mode of getting this information back to us? Leanne, uh, excuse me, Leah, with point. But I mean, if you don't distribute it at all, you're not gonna, you're gonna have zero shot. This is it, if you want to take a moment to look at it right now.
I think a lot of people will take a look at their tax bill, take that out, and throw away the rest.
A lot of times, people come in with their tax bill, and I've mailed other things with it.
Okay.
And it's, they're still together, they never even looked.
Mine.
Never even looked, right, exactly.
But that's where I like your idea of just looking at where we vote. And there's a hard copy, and they just say.
Right, but you have to have somebody who's willing to say that, because otherwise, you know, there's always, I have the stuff on the table, and you go, you don't care. I don't pick up one, everything, I don't know about you.
No, that's why I said it, like, I'd say, the, the town would like your input.
Oh, yes.
It's conceivable. But sure, I'm, I'm expecting to be able to get them. I'm planning to be there. You'll be there. You're planning to be there all time? Uh, I don't know, I haven't, I haven't filled out the schedule yet, I'm working on quite a few things.
No, that's right.
I had extra vacation money, here's a hundred dollars towards the postage, you get this thing accomplished.
We can't accept any money donations without town meeting.
Do we have an account for postage?
Not a reserve account.
I mean, i- is there money appropriated for postage?
Yes, but it has to be a reserve account. We just met through this with the rec committee, creating a reserve account to go back and forth on.
So why do they give us small room, and we can all hear each other's thoughts?
I'm only the ones that are spoken to. I can't figure it out.
No, because something went sideways.
Well, number eight. Ron Burke, maybe?
Yeah, number seven, seven.
Really fast, I don't know how it happened.
Yeah, this came out the treasure room.
Yeah.
Oh, dang.
We'll get back on, I realize everybody.
Mentioned anything, when they were already working.
Almost done, folks.
That's fine, we're talking about it.
Hey, so. I think it looks good.
Well, thank you.
You're welcome.
We didn't really invent it, mostly it came from two thousand eight.
Yeah, sure, I, I, I think it's reasonable to at least get some eyes on it if we're gonna be distributing it out to the town without. It's not a trust issue. Um, you said the format is gonna change, though?
No, 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 I was trying to format the, the introduction piece, and it screwed up the formatting. But when I reopened it again, it has it, but, but still that injection, still has to look.
Is that one how it's supposed to look, or?
Well, that's, yes, that's how it was sent out, and when I tried to.
What, I forgot how it looked on my computer, I wrote that. And she good with that?
Well, that's what I'm saying, so the formatting on that piece is not as desirable.
So I will, I will, I was, that was my only, like, nitpicky thing, like, when the front page is a little weird.
No, I hear why it looks like that, I didn't send you the original.
And actually, I, I, I updated it, and I actually, maybe I can find that too, I just sent that to you.
So, what does it take for us to have this on a table for people to fill out when they come in on election day?
Oh, we can add it to the, um, well, if you guys are okay with it, either add it to the agenda or we'll just.
We'll add it to the agenda and vote on it?
Do it now.
Yeah, go on.
Well, we're under reports right now, but.
On the open, uh, new business?
Comprehensive plan committee, you know, you don't do.
We'll come back.
You don't do reports anywhere, it's a bar, you can't say.
So, okay.
We'll come back to that.
Very, treasure report.
That was it.
Yeah.
Would they approve minutes?
I don't think they've met.
Planning board approve minutes?
Okay, so. You know, the comprehensive plan and it's very, I mean, something's wrong.
Comprehensive plan committee?
Yeah.
Yep, good. Add our planning committee approve minutes.
We want the comprehensive plan committee?
Thank you.
Yeah. You have to go through these, right?
No, no.
No?
Please, the audit committee approve minutes. Nothing.
Yeah, I'm going to meet Thursday.
Thursday? Cemetery committee approve minutes?
None.
Soul waste, ninety minutes?
Soul waste, you mean tomorrow, right?
No.
Not happening.
We're getting the funding tonight, we're gonna guess.
Does that change?
It was zero minutes.
Oh, okay.
Well, but those aren't approved minutes, yeah, I don't send.
Wasn't that on the schedule for the bond, or no?
Yes.
Yeah.
I sent you an email, but that wasn't correct.
Oh, okay.
I'm still confused, though, is it gonna be the last, it's from now on, it's the last, okay.
Oh, okay, I'm glad I came to this meeting tonight, because I'm going tomorrow, okay.
Recreation committee approve minutes.
Why don't I have approve minutes, but may I speak or not?
What's that?
I said I don't have approve minutes, but can I ask some questions, and tell you some things? Um, hunter safety, I think they certified nine people, top of our, we have some, I think, income, people showed up, I wasn't there. Um, we're on the calendar for a hunter's breakfast on November first, is that correct? I just wanted to verify, I wanted to be sure.
Nope, but I'll add it.
Okay, um, we are going to send approve minutes next time we meet, but this was all decided last night. Eleven twenty-eight, is it available to do a reef making? Or that setup, eleven twenty-nine, can we do reef making and sprays for a holiday? No?
Not the twenty-ninth.
What's happening, that's, okay.
Well, the halls rented the twenty-seventh and the twenty-ninth.
Okay, rented twenty-seventh and twenty-ninth, thank you. Um, and we're gonna try to do, what about uh twelve thirteen? We're gonna try to do a parent day out for shopping, and we'll watch your kids.
I have you on the, on the calendar for the thirteenth.
Okay, so it's rented on the Sunday, seven, twenty-nine, November, so we need to check that. Thank you, that's all I got.
Thank you.
Thank you, so now, is it all right if somebody who's on one of these uh boards or committees has something to say? You're not just gonna do approve the minutes, because you allowed her to speak, and I thought the new rule is you couldn't say anything, you just look at the minutes. Listen, just trying to figure out the processes here. That's what you just said the last couple of times.
I think that's up to us, well.
Oh, okay, great.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah, I think there was one of these pamphlets you had. It was a phrasing, for people not to speak, blah, 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 but it was up to the board, whether you wanted anybody to or not.
No, it was actually because one person was standing up and speaking for the committee. The minutes are approved by the committees.
Right.
So that's official, I know.
The minutes will be approved at your next meeting, right? And so you'll get them after the next meeting in another six weeks, they'll be way too late to even ask for the things she's.
Well, she should, if she wants to use the hall, she should ask to be on the agenda for hall use.
So she should ask to be on the agenda every time?
Every time she wants to use the hall, yeah.
I'm curious where this came from. What was the big change with the minutes?
I brought, I brought it up.
M and A's had something to say, and beat Aaron into a meeting about it, and interpreted it a certain way, and then I actually looked up the, what happened, what M and A had to offer. It's, it's confusing, it's confusing.
Well, I think it's one thing to receive a report from somebody, but it's not, I think what we're saying is that it's not actually law until we get a set of minutes.
And?
Approved them.
And?
And what?
Well, I always thought it was a pretty good way of knowing what was going on, and had to figure out the policy things, to have somebody who's a member of the committee speak up and tell you what's going on.
Was there a complaint that someone misrepresented the committee?
I don't know.
Where did this come from?
You're asking me?
Yes, you said you.
Uh, actually, the rec committee, because I never get minutes, and I always, sorry, Dana, but.
No, no, that, that's how.
You, on your own, without the others, always stand up and report, but they're not involved. So I suggested that we just review them approved minutes, that way everyone's information is in there, it's approved.
But I will also say, like, I'm with her, like, if I'm planning things out, we can't, well, we can't approve the minutes at the end of our meeting, right? So we have to wait till the next month, but if we're planning out, you know, like, it becomes a month behind. And also, for how many months, there were two of us, so nothing we did was official, because there weren't three of us.
That's great.
It's just become awkward.
I get it, but I also am like, if you want, I don't know.
So, nobody was misrepresenting committees, what's the issue? And if one committee wasn't submitting minutes, why change everything? It's just crazy.
It's a very question we could ask, to get the minutes by all of our committees.
And I would send you, like, I would have sent them to you last night.
Right.
But they can't be approved, because we haven't waited a month to read them, to have them approved.
But I don't think I have.
Which is my confusion.
I don't have any minutes from the rec committee, I have notes and reports. I don't have any minutes that have been approved.
Well, I've done it three different ways in my life, and four three-year-olds, so I'll have to.
So, so it sounds like your effort to get minutes has shut, has kept other people from speaking along the other committees about what they may say is going on, so you know things in a more timely manner, rather than waiting six weeks to get them in the approved minutes in your next select board meeting.
Right, I.
Because it seems to me, the kind of things that were being said were, oh, yeah, we met, we met last week, and we only had three people, but, so we were making, we were at Quama, we didn't make any decisions, or stuff like that, just like. You know, no, it's not, not an attempt to make it into approved minutes, but just like a quick report about what's going on, so you have a sense of what's actually going on. Wait till formal minutes, you're always gonna be behind the times.
Six weeks, by the time you get it concerning other select board meetings.
Yeah.
The question I wanna know is that, I feel like we're in the dark about what's going on, but if I'm concerned, I wanna know the going goings of a particular committee, I have no clue now.
Go to the meeting.
Yeah, okay, sure, again, thanks for all the time and work, man. I say if there isn't a rough outfit, if no one was complaining about misrepresentation of minutes, then there's nothing to fear.
All right, well. I think my opinion is that when we are a three-person board, we'll continue having this conversation with all of our board members here, how'd that sound?
Good.
Fair enough.
Fair enough.
Thank you.
Okay, now we're in open session.
Yeah. I have something for open session.
Yep.
So, I did find that the uh having uh rules of procedure for the comprehensive plan committee was tabled at the select board meeting on August fifth, so it hasn't been reconsidered at a select board meeting. And I thought it was gonna get put on the agenda for today, because I know, I personally asked for other things to get on the agenda. But I don't, so I don't know how that piece got missed. So, according to administrative ordinance part two, um. Ad hoc committees appointed by the select board for specific temporary purposes may operate with or without rules of procedure, but may operate with such rules if approved by the select board, which is why we, we came together and approved this slate of rules. And part of it is because we've had uh turnover in our membership, and the original membership was determined based upon a method to be sure that we got a variety of people on the board who were interested in public participation, because they were already on boards or committees in the town. So we followed the membership guidelines of the comprehensive plan review committee, but there was a misunderstanding of the select board, thinking I was asking to constitute a review committee, but I was as, asking to constitute a comprehensive plan committee to update the two thousand eight plan, not review what was in that plan and see if it's been, if it's been done or not. So, the, the select board did not understand the whole concept of what I was trying to bring to them, so, but.
Right.
This was a year ago, this was, this was a year ago. And the, the recommendations on who should be in a comprehensive plan committee by, the stuff that comes out from the state, is you need a variety of people in the community, and that's why following the recommendations of the review committee membership, which was like the, the chair or head of each committee, or, or somebody else who does, they designate. So we, we wanted to try to keep it broad that way, but we haven't had enough membership, and then, you know, at this point, we're re- ready to take whoever might wanna come along because of the dissensions and things in the town. And the major dissension was because of the fear that the, having the planning ball, board involved was going to make the decisions. My intention is only to have the planning board fulfill the obligations of shell prepare a comprehensive plan by making sure the every five-year review and the every ten-year data update happens. Not to say we're gonna um dictate what's gonna be in it, but just the four, you know, the formula to be in our, our um, like, I, I'm trying to get the bylaws changed in the planning board, so that we'll say that we will make sure that every five years we do this, and every ten years we do this, and we'll see the bridge of the select board, however we do it with the membership, but just to make it all work, and so, there's some set plan to get it done, because nothing has been done for comprehensive plans since two thousand eleven, and that's a, a long time in the modern age. And most of the things that were recommended in the two thousand eight plan weren't instituted, and a lot of them were the same as nineteen ninety-two. I'm just trying to make sure the process happens, not to control the, the outcome of what the decisions are.
That's my understanding, all along.
So, I have a question for you.
Yep.
What's the difference between ad hoc planning committee?
Yes.
And a comprehensive plan committee?
Okay.
Is there a third one? Are there any other titles out there?
No, no, no. The town used to have a comprehensive plan committee, and there, I think there was an ordinance for it, actually, and that.
There is an ordinance, there is an ordinance.
There is an ordinance, it's still in existence? For the comprehensive plan committee?
Yeah.
It's not in the ordinance books, as you, books you give people?
Yes, it is.
No, the ad hoc planning committee, the, the comprehensive plan review, the review committee, not the actual plan committee.
The ad hoc plan committee does not have an ordinance.
Right, but the comprehensive plan committee used to have, I think it used to have an ordinance, but right now, all we have is the review committee. There's never been a comprehensive plan committee ordinance in any book you've given me since two thousand eleven, when I came on the planning board, or what, you know, whoever was back then. So, lacking that, and with all the political discourse and things that happened in the past year, we finally got designated an ad hoc committee, because we disbanded the one that was formulated under the review committee, because it wasn't, it wasn't allowed to write a new plan, so we finally at least got this far, and I said, forget it, we won't, we won't. We're the comprehensive plan committee, we won't ar- argue about the name, okay? But let's just get our work done.
It could be six or seven ad hoc committees.
Well, it could be any number.
Right, right.
Well, they wouldn't all be doing the same.
No, 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 I'm just saying, e- e- essentially, it's, it's the comprehensive plan committee, but it's called an ad hoc committee, because that's how it was formulated last year, and let's not turn up the apple cart again, that's the way I look at it.
We are referring to it as the ad hoc planning committee?
Comprehensive plan, or you say, you call it planning committee, or the, you know, comprehensive plan.
In the minute.
The comprehensive planning committee, we, who are on the committee.
Well, the selectmen voted to create an ad hoc planning committee.
Yes, and you, you can continue to refer to it that way.
It's a power struggle.
No, that's what the selectmen voted on.
That's right, it's.
The selectmen who created the committee.
Legal amendment, take sure, it is the ad hoc committee, and let's. The legal amendment, take sure it is the ad hoc committee, and let's just leave that piece alone, it ain't worth arguing, I think.
Well, no, but when I, when I see it on the, on the documents, I'm curious why we're calling it multiple things when we're trying to accomplish one goal.
Because we're try, I, I'm trying to get a set of rules that can be put in also with the, um, planning board. Because that won't be recognizing a, an ad hoc committee, hopefully we'll get a structure, have a continuing structure. That's all I'm working on, is trying to ensure this happens, so the town doesn't go another 25 years without reviewing any data.
Well, I guess, okay, so this document, I know we're, we're dwelling on, on a title, but technically this should be the rules of procedure for the ad hoc committee, right?
But there, you can't do that, because you might have five ad hoc committees.
So not with the rules of procedure.
No, no, no.
Rules of procedure for an ad hoc. I don't want to have a title argument.
Fine.
Why do we have to go by what the last.
Why can't we just call it comprehensive plan?
Exactly, right.
On top of that, why do you need rules for an ad hoc committee?
We want them.
Well, yeah, but no, you don't want to.
Because what's good, this is, the last, the last plan took five years, which is probably why it's not reasonable to have an ad hoc committee.
My, my question ultimately, and maybe you just have to keep asking until you get.
Okay.
What does it take for us to be able to just operate, to disband or the title of the ad hoc planning and go back to calling it a harper comprehensive planning committee?
Well, then Leanne has to go through having everybody resign and have them sign paperwork to be in the new name committee.
There is no, there is no ordinance for a comprehensive plan committee.
Okay.
So it has to be ad hoc.
That's why I said, don't argue about the name.
Okay, hold on, hold on, hold on. To understand, five minutes ago, we said there was an ordinance for what?
For comprehensive plan review committee, which Peggy says isn't a committee to write a comprehensive.
Okay, okay, no, hold on, hold on, I'm processing. So we have an ordinance that states we have a comprehensive plan review committee, but we don't have an ordinance that says we have a comprehensive plan committee.
Right.
And that, and that takes a town meeting to get that correctly worded.
Because that review committee, there's a list of what they're supposed to do when it's not writing a new plan. It's reviewing the old ones, see what's been done and make suggestions to the board, how they should update, update those suggestions.
Okay, so, the reason I'm hanging my hat on this right now is because it doesn't, it literally is a freaking pretzel in my brain, okay? So.
Me too.
If this document that you're, you're looking to have instituted technically should read ad hoc planning committee, correct? Can we, can we agree on that?
Planning for what? I, I understand what you're saying, but then how do we deal with it when we're gonna work on the bylaws for the
Well.
for the planning board, that's why I wanted to make it more.
And, and.
Planning for what?
Good point.
Well, I think the.
Ad hoc planning committee, planning for what?
It's, it's.
Comprehensive plan.
Okay, I understand that, but we literally just acknowledge the fact that you, you can't, we only have a committee that is in existence or reviewing it. We don't have a ordinance that allows for it to be done the way you want it, so the ad hoc exists until we can get the ordinance committee to reword it, right?
Right, but you have to have comprehensive plan in there, or it's just, doesn't mean anything.
Well, can we make a.
Ad hoc comprehensive plan committee.
Okay, what, who the hell missed the word comprehensive in there when they have.
Well, no, I think it is.
Preuse administration.
I think, I think it is a comprehensive committee, if you look at March minutes, I think it's just that for agenda's sake, it's been short.
Is that all of this?
No.
No, okay.
When the motion was made, Kathleen, I think, said, I motion to create an ad hoc planning committee.
Okay. So can I?
And she probably should have put, she probably should have said comprehensive.
Okay, so can I, can I make a motion to revise the title of that committee, so it has the word com- comprehensive plan?
That's what it means.
Is it that simple?
If you want to add it to the agenda.
Okay, I make a motion to add changing of the ad hoc planning committee title. So we can vote on it and make it more up to date.
Accurate.
Isn't that the same thing?
Well.
Okay.
Was there a second?
Well.
Second, yeah.
Yeah, please.
My favor?
Okay. This really enlightened me after so much confusion, so. Well, thank you. Okay, so here we go. I make a motion, and let's get this right. I make a motion to retitle the ad hoc planning committee the ad hoc comprehensive planning committee. Plan, sure, plan, drop the ing please.
Okay, a second.
I keep saying Shakespeare, almost by any other name.
Okay, all in favor, so. Now that we, now that we've cleaned up a little bit of confusion, I'm going to ask you to revise your title.
Okay.
So it falls in line with what the true title of this is. And we also need to get the ordinance committee to start working on.
This is okay.
Revise that. And if that, can we just play, see this play out a little bit? Come June, July, we can then disband the ad hoc committee, correct? Alright.
Okay, well. Oh, I can't remember. So we continue working as we are, but if we change. Oh, if you have just a comprehensive plan committee, other committees in town have disbanded because of no membership and things have gotten left by the wayside, that's what I was concerned about, why I wanted enshrined in the planning board bylaws, so that we have some mechanisms to make sure that this ongoing responsibility does keep happening.
Okay, so what do you suggest me?
That's why I'm just, I, I was gonna put, recommend, we haven't had time to discuss it, for the bylaws, that the, the, the comprehensive, the planning board will assure that a comprehensive plan committee needs to update the, the plan, I mean, review the plan every five years and update it every 10 years with new data, something, something along that way, like suggest to the select board members or something, you know. That we, it's in our bylaws, so we haven't written that, because we're a committee that's not likely to never, ever meet again, hopefully.
So.
It just is an ongoing responsibility, because the, um, you know, not everybody in the select board really understands what a comprehensive plan involves or has even read the, the, uh, the 2008 one.
Right.
So there's a lot involved. And we, we deal with land use issues all the time, and the whole reason of having comprehensive plan is to deal with land use, because that's what's gonna change the most rapidly.
So I have a question for the more experienced people in the room. Come June, if this is sold well to the voters of our community and they understand what they're voting on, this should pass without issue. Is any work that gets done by this ad hoc comprehensive plan committee? I'm gonna get that right, dang it. Is any, is any work that they do naturally gonna be able to just slide over from this, whatever they're doing into the other committee?
Oh, hell yeah. Yeah, at this point, because what, what we're doing is we're gonna get that data and analyze the data. Then we have all these topics we need to collect a lot of information on, the state tells us exactly what information we have to collect and how, how to go about doing it. And then we're gonna have some public hearings to discuss the initial process of a comprehensive plan. For people to come in, hopefully after they've seen the questionnaire, we have something to review. And then as we move further along, we will decide, um, goals and implementation methods for each one of those 15 or so topic areas. And we'll take two or three of them at a time and have a series of public meetings about each one of those, that's why it takes it a long time. So we won't be that far by key.
Right, and then, okay.
Right. Okay.
And then last question.
I had a doc, long document.
Last question for, for recollection, and then we'll move forward. This was supposed to have passed in the last, I mean, they, uh, the guy that designed, I'm trying to remember his name.
Yeah, Daryl.
Daryl, wasn't, wasn't he trying to sell this?
Okay, so what happened was, the select board did not want to recognize the fact that the comprehensive plan ordinance, which was as it was written in 1989, after the planning board actually did a comprehensive plan in 1973, stated that they would be responsible for comprehensive plan, and the next big one came out in 92, because that's when the state planning office got off the ground and started this whole procedure for the whole state of having comprehensive plans. So, that's how we got the 92 plan, and then that followed with the, the 2008 plan.
That they were trying to clean up the language in 2024, right?
No, no, it's because Daryl thought shall prepare, that the word shall didn't meet, was not an imperative, it was a.
Okay, so that's not what I, okay, that's all I needed.
Yeah.
Okay.
With the shall, what does shall mean? No, that was one case.
Okay. Alright, let, can we?
I'm sorry to disrupt the meeting.
No, I think, in my head, we've made progress, I think, so. Makes more sense, it lines us up for June, hopefully that lands and we can go forward.
Anything else on open session? Guess not. Okay, we're calendar reminders. Waste me, meeting October 22nd.
29th.
Twenty ninth, yeah. Ordinance committee meeting tomorrow night. No, Thursday.
Thursday.
At 6:30.
Wait, 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 wait.
I'm telling you, we didn't meet on the 16th, if somebody had a call, we're meeting tomorrow, uh, Thursday night.
Okay, did somebody tell me that?
I think I sent an email. It's, um, tomorrow night, the 22nd. On its page one.
The Lord mentions tomorrow?
Yes, Thursday night, so it's embarrassing.
I said tomorrow, but I ruined that Thursday.
Right, I thought you, I thought it was Thursday, okay.
Oh no, Kathy, you're have to come, and Pamela says it's Monday, we're doing it without you.
Alright.
Jay, ad hoc planning committee meeting, October 27th, wait, we just changed the name. Don't guess.
No, 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 you gotta say it right.
Having somebody come from, um, the natural resources department and give a, uh, hopefully a visual presentation, we're gonna find out if he needs any audio visual aids.
Alright, you didn't say anything.
Well, about how to use all the different maps that are available from the state.
I can even, I'm gonna ask.
Okay, so that'd be 6:30.
Yeah.
27th. Yes.
Yeah.
Planning board meeting, November 3rd, 7 o'clock. Election courses, November 4th, 8 to 8. Town office will be closed, or. I don't know if it will or not, how about?
I don't know.
Election, no. Okay, Jay, lean, do you, yeah, somebody, okay. Selectment meeting, November 5th, 6:30.
When you did it.
And that is it for them. Okay, unfinished business. CMP pole relocation update, town office.
Oh, do I have updates, okay. So, contacted CMP in, I, I had an action item from last, last meeting, so it was to find out who's responsible for taking care of the alternate utilities other than CMP on the pole, and to verify with CMP that they are responsible for communicating with the internet providers and anything else that may be on that pole, to make sure that they are there to coordinate relocation. Uh, also, follow up with CMP regarding where we're at, they prepped and sent an easement document to Elizabeth Harvey O'Keefe. I hope I got her last name.
Garcia.
Yeah, I got them the wrong order, sorry. Oh, Garcia, okay, alright. And they sent her the document in mid-September, I contacted her, she didn't know anything about it. So I had them send me the easement form, and she had provided me her daughter's name, contact information, because she's the POA, I guess. Is that right, power attorney?
Something like that.
Yeah, something like that. Uh, so now I'm trying to get, literally, basically, this, one of the two holdups who are getting this pole replaced now is the easement document that I need to get signed and notarized. And I texted her and I'm waiting for a response, because she didn't answer the prior phone call that I gave her. Condor Electric. Is that actually on our agenda, man?
Yeah, that's why it's on here, because we got an estimate for the mast.
Okay, so we can address this? Because we're talking about pole relocation?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Just wanted to verify. So now it goes on to the quote that we got from Condor Electric, because we're looking to replace the riser cable with a galvanized mast through the roof of the town hall, because in order to do what we're proposing by moving that pole, we would continue using the mast that's on this building, but the one of the town hall is not high enough. So, um, we have funds available to us from the goodwill supper.
Hotlet supper.
Um, not for this.
Did I get it mixed up?
We took the TV out of that.
What was this one coming from?
This is from the town, I think you talked about town hall improvement fund?
Right.
I think.
It had like $6,800 in there.
That's the goodwill supper, but that was the TV.
Was it?
It is not that much money in yours to cover this.
Oh, it wasn't?
I don't think so. Well, this is 15.
Right. I, I don't recall it from my head where we were pulling this, looking to fund this from. Garcia O'Keefe?
No, it's not, it's not as last name as.
Oh, yeah, right.
I will see Elizabeth tomorrow morning, and, and along with, you know, shot.
Have a good night.
See you, Dave.
I'm here.
Thank you.
176726 in the goodwill supper, but we just purchased a TV.
So that's, okay, I got it mixed up, so the money for the TV was coming from the goodwill, okay. Where were we talking about coming up with this money, I don't remember.
Look at the minutes, I thought it was the.
Thank you.
The improvement, the building improvement.
Uh, yeah. Lee, what were we just talking about?
Huh?
We were just talking about something.
Said something about, who goes to best.
Oh, yeah, you said.
Oh, yeah, I'm gonna see Elizabeth and, and Gemma, that's Emily's daughter, tomorrow morning. And I will mention this.
Is Emily going to be here, though?
Uh, no, no, actually, her daughter's here because Emily's working and her daughter is here visiting the grandmother.
Well, I have a, a, a quite urgent document.
I happen to know that the grandmother comes starting school in Lincolnville Thursday. So sometime between now and Thursday, the mother will be.
You're gonna pick up the document.
I don't know how to make this happen.
Does it need to be just signed or notarized?
Both.
Can you offer her free notary stamp? Is this for the town? Oh, it's Thursday, she won't, probably won't be offered.
Elizabeth would know.
So did it has been notarized?
It does.
Do you have a, a quad number?
I do.
Okay.
She would know if she's check going to her daughter, or her daughter is coming here.
Yeah, I offered the, Lincolnville, that's up by Rockland, right? Yeah, I, I offered the drive up there, for God's sake, it's not so bad, so. Anyways, in your lucky hand.
I don't see it in there, did we talk about it at the last meeting? Thought we did, because I got a quote.
Right, I think it might be two meetings ago. I think that, that'd be five weeks ago, because it wasn't, never we had the.
Map tech, okay.
That sounds familiar. Oh.
Goodwill.
Alright, I'm gonna go ask. All they have is CMP. All they have is CMP relocation.
Yes, it was Charles Jones.
That a mast is required at a cost of approximately twelve hundred dollars. A board member will ask our local electrician for a quote.
Yeah, you and Aaron had been looking at budget somewhere around the last meeting, and you guys came to that meeting and you said there was a way to make it happen. I don't remember how, though. Huh?
The only thing I can think of is a town hall improvement.
How much money is in that?
Fifty thousand.
Oh, God.
It was to build a new town office, and then at town meeting, we voted to change the name of it to be used for all buildings owned by the town.
Well, that seems like a funny.
Well, I feel like it was definitely something with that similar title, so if there's only one, I guess that's it.
I think that's it.
So we, so.
Are we sure she's gonna sign the easement? Okay.
Yeah, she's, she's all about it. She's just logistically having a hard time putting the puzzle together, because, well, first of all, she got it from CMP and busted, or I'm not sure what. Um, but now I've got two copies in my truck, because I wanted to be extra prepared.
What was the other cost involved? The mast and wasn't there another cost involved? Just the mast?
I, well, I think I emailed you, but maybe it, it might be in my notes right here. The only other cost involved is I threw my work process, I, I've taken care of the logistics, and I had to process a state permit. Oh, I didn't know if you did that or not. Might be in these notes on my computer. So it's a seventy-five dollar fee to process the permit to keep the ball rolling. The state has to have a permit in order to do this. And then it's his quote. After that, that's it. CMP comes and they move, we replace the two poles across the street, they reconnect with this one. The guy told me we had to replace the mast over there.
And that was it, okay.
That was it.
So more than just Elizabeth has to sign this?
Well, no, it's, you can't even be able to do this, because she doesn't technically own the property. It's in like a trust or something, if I remember correctly.
I know.
So Emily, Emily whatever her last name is.
Yeah, I just sent her a text message, Elizabeth a text message, asked when she's gonna be here.
She needs to sign it, and it has to be notarized. So, yeah, I drive to Lincolnville, or-
So it's the daughter that has to sign.
So she's getting slumped with messages, because I just-
So should we, I don't know if you're gonna approve this or not, but should we install the mast, even though we're not positive that's gonna happen?
My, here's the thing.
Where that guy?
Um.
She's gonna go across the screen.
She's gonna go across the screen.
I think so.
So I spoke with Condor Electric, and I verified quote entails what we're looking for. I asked if the quote includes a state permit. It does not. Therefore, all coordination, including state permit, I will coordinate to my work with the board of electric. There will be no charge for my time, other than the seventy-five dollar permit fee. Um, state permit has been processed and revised to CMP. I did that yesterday. Condor Electric agreed. We should get this scheduled ASAP. But asked if we are awarding him this job, we give him a two-week lead time, so he can coordinate his work with whatever date CMP commits to.
Okay. But we don't even have the easement yet.
We don't. So we can-
We're just-
We can sit on this until the next meeting and keep this as an open item. Because I, I mean, uh, I don't know, I, I did everything in my power to get that thing signed before this.
Waiting here. You'll find out.
Yeah, well, we can table that topic. So what else did I have in my?
Let's see how much we have in hall maintenance.
Okay.
Five hundred dollars.
Five hundred, I think.
All right, well.
Oh, I just left my car.
No.
Oh, they were so sure that you would, you'd go over there.
We thought you fixed this for us, Lenny.
Oh, yeah.
So anyways, uh, that's where we stand. We're waiting on easement, and then CMP tells me we're good to go. They'll schedule this, they'll get it done. That's the bottom line. So, um, and then-
Find out once you've come.
Yeah, well, maybe we can, if-
I'll let you know.
All right, good.
So at this time, I suggest we don't approve this until we
Right.
actually have the easement signed, I guess. That's, that's what we can set up.
I mean, I think, uh, is, is it also possible that Elizabeth could take that document and they can find a notary over in Lincolnville?
Yes.
Oh, yeah, I don't see why not. And I guess that would be my suggestion, and this is what I would, uh, I would tend to suggest to Elizabeth, because I'm gonna be seeing you tomorrow morning.
As long as somebody-
She'll lose it.
She's not gonna lose it.
Well, no offense, but that's happened twice already.
All right.
On this, on this.
On this exact situation.
You've lost it twice?
Yes. That's why I'm printing two copies this time.
For crying out loud.
I will, I literally am at the end of the road, where I'll drive to Lincolnville if I can help get it done, but I don't, I thought I didn't wanna do that, so.
Well, it's a beautiful time of year for a drive down the hill.
Yeah, you're not wrong.
Why not?
I'll bring you with you, you can buy me coffee.
Take nine, awesome boy.
Okay, moving forward.
I will ride with you, no problem.
Happen, happenings.
Yeah, uh, so, I believe the reason that's on the agenda is because I wrote the thing, and you reviewed it and approved it.
It's right here?
Or is there more to that?
Is it a select board letter?
Oh, yeah.
Yes.
Yeah.
That's what, or, that's why it's on the agenda, correct?
Mm-hmm.
Yes, okay. Do you wanna make the motion?
Yeah, to make the motion to accept the letter from the slipboard to happenings.
I second that.
Okay.
Then you'll send it to me when you want it.
I will send it to you by tomorrow morning, if not tonight.
Okay, two hundred fifty celebration schedule.
I asked, um, Rebecca to get something together for what's going on at the ball field, but I haven't received anything yet. Oh, this is from Lorraine.
Town hall exhibits. Thank you, thank you. Oh, moving to that members? Members?
Okay.
She's, she added a bunch of stuff that's really not gonna happen, but she's hoping. Like, my, my brother is not gonna be there.
Okay. We don't need to do any of this.
Okay, Bob Perry, we, we not very good housewives.
Oh, Mary. The mayor of the Kendal, Robert, you've been gone since-
Ariel, Ariel, Ariel.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah, who's Jerry? Jerry Skinder?
Jerry Skinder, he lives up on Mountain View Drive, or has a summer place up there.
Is his name Skinder?
Yep.
Oh. Just a little confusing there, written like that. All right. We have no action on this, correct?
Nope, um, you, you requested it at the last meeting.
Okay. Have an idea what they're up to, though.
You like many of us, or PMS?
Yeah, if you like, um, I mean, I guess they're talking about some decorations, some activities at the ball field, some concessions.
Kathy, what a look on your face. What, what participation are we thinking?
Town hall exhibits, taxidermy, among other things.
Taxid, well, who, Marion, no, who are we stopping?
There's, there's gonna be a meeting January eleventh. I don't know if it's a rec committee meeting, or if it's just a, a Lorraine.
Even my mom's close, because I have a list this long in the rec committee meeting note about what was suggested that we do.
Oh.
And I was like, wow, what are we gonna get to do on this?
Is Lorraine on the rect wing?
No.
Right, so this technically is not a rec committee initiative, correct?
No, but we've been asked to do things at the ball field.
Right.
And we were told, you do what you're doing at the ball field, and you're responsible.
So you do, you, you, yeah, I shall do what she does.
Miss USA?
What?
Yeah.
That's on there?
Yeah, mi, well, say, Miss USA, and then it says Miss Hartford.
God, help us.
Brainstorm of a list.
We have Mr. Hartford already.
Yeah, I mean, this is twenty twenty-five now, right? All right, uh, fire trucks.
Miss Hartford, how many trucks do we have? Seriously?
They have to bring it from other towns, we don't have any.
That's what I mean.
Right.
Well, we'll demonstrate all our fancy equipment in this town.
Anyways, I guess this is a, this is a look at what they're planning for next July four. All right, moving forward.
Lot of work.
Yeah, there's a lot to it.
Okay. New business. General servants, audience, and members. We make a motion to accept the changes to general assistance, as far as, audience. Do we have a choice? No.
I second that.
There's always, there's always a choice, it's not always a choice, but but the thing of it is, there's always a choice, but if the town should reject the state's recommendations, we have to do an income survey in our town and figure out what our correct numbers would be.
We don't wanna do that.
Oh, you want, no, we don't.
The end, you want?
There's so many ways for-
Go back up to your camera top writing for your notes, I guess. He, I just wanted to tell you that he got back to me, and he said, do, I said, do cameras provide audio or, or just visual? And he said, both.
Oh.
So that's concerning.
So it's just outside, then?
Yeah, I wouldn't, I don't think we can have a camera in here that picks up audio.
I wonder if there's a setting you could mute it, what, if there was a traffic, you wanna hear it?
Yeah, but I mean, if somebody's got confidential information, but
Yeah.
Double-edged sword, right?
And will these be archived, and will they be, like, erased every so many weeks or something?
Uh, that's another question I have for him. I'm just gonna call him on my way to work tomorrow. Because I don't know how long the information is saved.
Can you also go at, also ask him if the microphones have a warranty, because they don't work? Those table ones.
I will. Oh, I gotta add that to my action items, though.
The ad hoc planning committee notice request on website.
Maybe just wondering what that was referring to. Maybe it was to noted, put on the website that we could, like, some more members, but I don't know what you have.
I thought it was the, uh, I thought it was the notice about the thought we were gonna put it.
Oh, oh, about doing, about the survey.
That's about doing the survey.
Oh, yes, maybe that was it, yeah.
Yeah, I think it was the survey.
About the survey, yeah.
No.
No.
His heart been changing. Eight new homes are permitted in the first five months of the year. Join the comprehensive plan and help our future rural beauty bedroom or retirement community. Shared interests and goals. Next meeting is October twenty-seventh with a presentation by Greg Leclerc. I just asked the slipman, is it okay to put this on the website? And they said to put it on the agenda.
Well, that's because I was, it was a little work thing, and I couldn't really wrap my head around it, because I was curious. It, does it just go on the main page, or does it end up?
Well, it's probably on that beginning page where, uh, let's see.
That was more or less, I just wanted to-
The news page. It could go in Hartford happenings. We could have some, it, but
Yeah, but how's that, is that gonna go out before the week from?
Yeah, I think it's-
Next Monday?
Something, something like that needs to go, you need, you need, you like the banner when you first go up in the website, because nobody's ever gonna see it.
Well, it's up next week. You're gonna take out this public hearing about general assistance and just put it in that spot underneath the ballot stuff, or something like that. You just have, have it expire in ten days when it's done.
Can you set something like that to expire?
Um, I don't know, I've never done it.
How do you, how do you add things to the, you do yourself?
Yes.
On go.
They just gotta remember to take it off, that's cool. All right, um, I make a motion to add this to the website, that's fine.
Yes, I did. Well, baby. Very.
Yeah.
Could it also go in Hartford happenings minus the date?
Yeah.
Well, well, because the Hartford happenings won't come out in time.
Right, so we shouldn't mention about the person coming for that, right, for the meeting.
I think it would be a good thing to put in many places, so we can start getting more.
Yeah, and, and something more specific about the survey, we're having that come out in a couple of weeks, too. Maybe it needs to be rewritten to include.
Let's, well, okay, so do you wanna revise it before we put it on the website, or what are you asking?
Um, I was just thinking Hartford happenings is going out. We have three people here, we can have a forum. Make a decision.
I'm just saying, Hartford happenings is going out, you know, in between Hartford news, that if there's something important, maybe it could go in there.
Well, right, if you're talking about your document, though, you want people to actually fill out, so.
No, 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 we're just talking about the notice that, to be looking out for the survey will come out soon.
That's what I mean.
Survey's coming out soon.
Survey will be in there.
Do you wanna revise this and add something about the surveys, like?
Sure.
Yes.
Okay, so, I wanna revise my motion. I make a motion for us to approve you put it in Hartford happenings and on the, on the website after you submit a revision to the, to the end, that's it.
Well, I'm doing Hartford happenings tomorrow. I'm gonna print it.
Can you get it to her tonight, because it's a very simple revision?
Yeah, I'll do it.
Is that not gonna throw up then, you getting it put in there, Leanne? I'm not putting you under too much of a deadline.
No, I'll just have to make things smaller, fit it in.
I already gotta get you your thing, too, so.
Just right behind you, in front of you.
Uh, oh, yeah. So this is going out tomorrow, and so, like, online?
I'm gonna print, yep, I'm gonna print a few for here and put it online, and email it.
Perfect.
Okay.
Did you second that revision?
Yeah, you seconded it.
All clear, yeah. Cool.
BYOB permit casualty for that.
So just for clarification, the way that works, she, she rents the hall, and we don't have to-
I can't hear you.
We don't have to vote on allowing people to use the hall, right?
Not if they pay, no.
Right, so what, we are voting on this, right?
Right, that's up to you.
So I make, I've already reviewed this, so I make a motion to allow for the BYOB.
What's that? Oh, I can't hear what everybody's talking. Sorry.
No, you're fine. I make a motion to allow for the BYOB, BYOB to be allowed, essentially is what we're saying, right?
Perfect.
Because we're allowing them to use the hall for that use. Is that, that accurate? What are we?
We still have to apply to the state, but, yes, if you know any reason why Cassidy Dodd should not have the hall at the town hall, you need to not sign this.
Right.
Right. I'm gonna see you, problem.
I'm just having a hard time wording it in the way you-
Approve the BYOB permit.
Okay, there you go. I approve the BYOB permit, thank you.
A second, yeah. Okay, one.
Here it is, there's a, right on the backside here.
But that's a state document, correct?
Yeah.
Yes, a fee, a fee is sent to the state domain, it's done, done online. Yes, a fee, a fee is sent to the state domain, it's done, done online now.
Okay.
And they approve it. And the only reason she's getting it, because the first year we, she had Thanksgiving, someone brought a bottle of wine and we had to put it away, cause we didn't have a permit.
Oh, yeah, okay.
Yeah, I could go look at it before. Cute little paper things, yeah.
I know, they're fancy.
Hey. Hall use, brand benefit dinner.
There's nothing in there but, um, Dina. Dina Toma would like to host the would like to whatever the word, hold a spaghetti dinner fundraiser for Cody Brand.
Yep.
Um, it's up to you whether to waive the fee or not, insurance is required.
Yep, so I make a motion to waive the fee for the town hall use for the benefit for Cody Brand.
And I can do my insurance, so for you.
Corey, isn't it?
Is it Cody or Corey? Corey?
Corey.
There's two boys.
Don't be wrong.
Miss, Miss. So I'll put a thing in my insurance. That'll save.
Speaking of Dana, does anybody know what's
Oh, wait a minute, was there a second?
You said it.
I thought I said it, yes, I said.
Hey, I'll figure it out.
Nick motion, Kathy second. And Kathy will provide insurance.
Yeah.
What is that about?
Insurance is required.
Are you, are you doing that as a?
Don't cost me nothing.
Oh, okay.
We, we do have Gavaguard, which costs seventy-five cents, um, seventy-five dollars through the town, if someone's homeowner's doesn't cover it. Cause I know we rented the hall before and it was like a hundred and fifty dollars for insurance, so.
Oh, so you're, you're lending it in good courtesy? Right?
Donation.
Yep. Kathy, that's nice.
Does anybody know what's going on with this, this stupid?
Last time I heard, uh, lack of funds to go any further.
Uh-huh.
So I guess they didn't expect to pay that much on a well. Which I don't know why she didn't get with Rocky or some other, uh, company besides Goodwin. And they did the well and the septic system, I don't, maybe Jeremy volunteered for this.
Jeremy probably did.
Service for the septic system, but the well cost more than what she thought.
Mine was, uh, almost seven thousand, oh.
Seven?
Yep, they had to crack five hundred.
Mine was seventeen. Brutal.
Seventeen thousand?
Thousand.
Holy Moses.
No, it's, it's not two, mine was eight.
So this goes to show you what it may cost, Scott only knows.
Yeah. That's what I heard last, this lack of funds.
But, so it's just on the whole, yep, so instead of, we're, we're going to use the, yep, it's a whole.
Yeah, I stopped reading and I was, I, I, I don't listen and read at the same time, and I was curious about what that update was with that. So, is that why they have to pause, nothing's happened there for a while, they're not building?
Apparently so, yeah. That's why I was asking, we should have a, a little bar raising. Yeah, I don't know what has a bar raising doesn't get cash. Well, it's a house bill.
That's right.
Yeah, that's what I mean, say.
Except for hell?
A house raising instead of.
The well is always.
Yeah.
So, I'm gonna read this aloud to make sure I understand it. Coming soon, a community survey to in okay, coming soon, a community survey to inform the comprehensive plan will be available at town hall on election day. At the, uh, I think you're saying also at the town office or online, so that is the comprehensive plan?
No, it's a survey by the committee, that's why we should put committee in there. Oh. Oh, yeah, 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 yeah.
No, don't worry about that. A concrete, a community.
I spent a long time, more than a month.
Oh, I see what you're saying, to inform the compre- okay, to inform the comprehensive plan.
Yes.
Do you wanna add the word committee?
Sure. Sometimes what I mean to say is remains in my head.
Well, to inform the committee.
Go over things over and over again, edit. Yeah, that's why I sent the Hartford News to Bonnie Bishop, she's the best editor I would ever see.
No kidding.
She finds everything.
I used to actually be professional, a little bit. I didn't get a lot of money in college, type of, you know, the people, take this and everything, you know?
I bet you did.
But you can't. You just do that to the end.
Can't have your own project. Yeah, cause you can, you always, you always miss like little two little words that you need to put in, and
Yeah.
commas, like, it's, it's extra spaces.
But then she won't have the, if she knows this.
I think it's important that, you know, these things that the Hartford Happenings has input on these things that affect the whole town, rather than
No, it's
I know what I'm saying.
All these things were.
Vibrant enough. This thing says that this is. So who actually determines what goes into the Hartford Happenings? Do you see the whole layout before it's approved?
Good question.
Because we, we understand that maybe it's only Leanne who's decided what's going on, I don't know. Also, was it something approved by the select board in terms of spending and salary spend? Or it's, I'm just curious.
Thank you guys asked that in the past, but I wasn't.
Oh, it's a new, it's a new publication as of the last, last twenty-four, you can do last twelve months.
Right, I think we can probably need your presence to be able to answer that unless Kathy remembers clearly what happened, but I wasn't here.
I think it would be really good to have stuff like this in there.
Oh, absolutely.
Nothing is solicited, really.
Right, I don't, I haven't seen anything on there that looks solicited though, right?
That's what I'm saying.
Right.
Yeah.
Google Drive.
Okay, so I I just, um, looked up. So the Google Drive, Leanne tells me already thirteen or fifteen, uh, gigabytes or whatever the level is is used up on the Google Drive. And the, the planning board stuff is like one point five, and so I think for the town, it would be really in our interest to spend a dollar ninety-nine a month to extend it to the hundred gigabyte level. And I have here, uh, it's only AI, but it says, um, donate money directly to a main municipality, your town, for designated purpose such as funding a you know, community services straightforward and encouraged under state law, provide the town agrees as a medium project. So I'm willing to give a hundred dollars to fund the, uh, extended Google Drive for fifty months, and that will give the town four years to come about with a dollar ninety-nine a month to fund this, um, extended use of the Google Drive.
Okay.
And Leanne said earlier that, yeah, I can't give you money, but it says I just have to write, do it in, you know, written format and what I'm giving it for.
Okay.
Is that AI that you're looking at? You should probably look at the law.
Well, um, provided a written notice to the news offices, the amount of the money, conditions, what's gonna be used for, uh, then within ten days of that meeting, the officers will notify and write in with the town accepts or rejects the gift. Uh, method of money check, uh, well, says preferred method is a check.
Well, not that received donation before.
Not without town meeting approval.
Town meeting? Not select board?
Really, so, okay, so in a town meeting form of government, you cannot accept, uh, a donation except it is formally approved at a town meeting, is that what you're saying?
I believe so.
Okay.
Please.
My understanding has always been that if a donation arrives, if one time we get a check for a hundred dollars, it's just donation to the town. That actually has to go to town meeting, because it was just donation to the town. On the other hand, if we had set aside some money for something, now, Leanne says it has to be in a um, reserve account, but that wasn't my understanding, but it say, if we were playing, we were playing, um, in our budget to set aside money for a playground, and somebody sent us a check for a hundred dollars towards that playground, if the money had already been appropriated for that purpose, then the select board is allowed to accept that money. Therefore, if the select board is already appropriated some money towards something, it seems to me that you ought to be able to.
Wish we haven't.
Right. So, but I mean, I appreciate your donation, but it's like thirty bucks.
What?
To do it, right?
No, it's a dollar ninety-nine a month, yeah, so that's.
Yeah, like thirty bucks a year.
A year, yeah.
But you can't.
And I know your budget is very strict, so.
And you can't cancel it, you have to, it, what happens if you cancel it after a couple of years, does all the information?
Okay, they'll, they'll stop sending you notices, well, this is what happens when you start to get full, they'll say you're getting notices, they'll start sending notices that you're getting full and you're gonna have to either expand the amount of space that you use, or you may lose your data. So, if you download it once a week, you know, to back it up, you'll always have the data. So, I mean, if at some point within the next four years, or wh- or wh- whatever time you, you, you use it, you, the town decides you wanna use other software, uh, Neil Austin already said the, the information can be converted to other file formats, and that's not really important, cause most of it's documents, but I'm using Google Sheets, and he said specifically that could be transferred to like an Excel or some other program that keeps data, cause I'm working, I'm having the structure there to actually do your cabinet eventually. I started using the high-speed scanner, it's very efficient, but the indexing takes forever.
But you're doing it.
And I'm, I'm doing it, you know, cause I'm a fool.
But I am gonna clean out the Google Drive, so there will be fifteen
Right.
megabytes.
I mean, do we, do we need to talk about where we can find the thirty dollars or the one ninety-nine per month, like, to me, it makes no sense to just pay annually rather than on, on a, on a monthly basis. If, if and when we need it.
And, and the other issue is that the comprehensive plan will be doing stuff on it.
Right.
The ordinance committee has already voted in their committee to use a Google Drive. The, um, rec committee is using a private Google Drive. I mean, this is something that if we move, you know, everybody, we work in the same place.
It was all in the same place, I agree.
That's why, the other reason to have it higher than fifteen, but you can delay it for a couple of months if you can clean up the drive.
Well, right, if, if, if we wanna delay it a couple of months, if you wanna clean up the drive, but are you making so much progress that you're about to?
No, because the, the estimated scanning volume of fifty thousand pages is only one point five gigabytes. I just calculated that out today, at three hundred dots per minute. So, if we're one point five now, we add another one point five, that's three gigabytes.
So let's just let you clean it. Huh?
Should be plenty with the fifteen.
Right, so let's just let you clean it, and let's keep doing our thing and see how we start pushing on our ceiling and go from there. I think that's what it was. Right, I mean, right, cause you're telling me we're not there yet, right?
Well yeah, well, we're close, we're close to it before I upload anything, but I'm, I mean, I, I bought this computer, it has one terabyte, so tag, whatever, terabyte, because I wanna make sure I had enough space on this to scan everything.
Right, but I mean, it, it's so lo- so long as you're planning to clean it, definitely has the capacity right now.
And if we're gonna transfer information from the Google Drive to some other memory backup?
Mm-hmm.
I mean, I use memory sticks and things.
Well, how do you normally back up your computer?
How do I, I back up my files to a memory stick? Trio has a online program, website to a file.
You don't have carbon memory or anything. So, your memory stick, what percentage of it is used when you put your backup now?
I have some high volume.
Yeah, cause I have like sixty-four, whatever they are.
Right, I guess the fact of the matter is if Leanne's gonna clean up some of the Google Drive, and you are saying you're not really using much more than one point five.
Yeah, well, I am one point five now, but probably, you know, three to four in, in summary at the end.
When?
When we get all that stuff in there too.
Like four months from now, or?
Yeah, yeah, well, the indexing is taking a very long time, so we'll see how much it progresses.
Plenty of time.
Do we agree that we just wait? Or do we find money to just pull trigger now? That's my question.
Well, I, well, if, if you can.
I don't think we need the donation is my point, it's thirty bucks.
Well, I just I know that was the, the hindrance.
The donation is gonna hold up progress.
Okay.
Because of the, the limitations.
Okay.
So what's your perspective?
Don't worry about that, cause that's my, my job, I'm gonna have to combine what you've already done, which is duplicated and, I'll handle that.
Okay.
Well, it won't be, it won't be duplicated, cause it's pretty, if I math and law and year.
I know, but I have the same thing you have over there in there.
But, 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 once we get to the scanning part, we'll say, oh, we already have this document, and not copy the things that are already, have as originals. I mean, it will, it will work out.
I'm sure it'll work out, but the question is, is, do we need to upgrade our capacity right now?
Probably, probably not, but as long as there's enough space on the, the Google Drive, if, if people wanna use it.
Well, we need it two weeks, so if it becomes an issue, I say let's just address it when we need to.
Alright, great.
Right? I, I can assure you we'll support it, and that's what we're looking for.
That's, yes, that's what I'm, yeah.
It's very important.
Good.
Okay, curbside collection complaint.
No way, really?
Where's online?
Right? I'm happy to speak to that because I've been talking to Jerry regularly. Cause he like um So I spoke to Jerry about, I just wanna make a couple of statements, number one. Jerry, with R G's, there's been some missed, um, uh, confusion as to what day they emptied dumpsters in the town of Hartford. I've asked him three weeks in a row, and consistently, he answers correctly. Mondays is the day they empty dumpsters in our town now. Whatever that used to be, is no longer. They are also supposed to be emptied on a weekly basis, and that's not supposed to impact our fees in any way for our conversation. Particularly in the complaint about, from, from Pine Shores here. Um, I spoke with Jerry, and he feels that utilizing the recycling shed is not the most efficient and is not consistent with their current business operations, when they usually in a place where they have dumpsters, they would also have a dumpster that is just for recycling.
That would work if you have single source, we don't have single source.
Not yet.
Yet.
Well, he claims that they do. He claims that they would just use single source.
They have it set up now, okay.
I guess so, that's what he said to me.
We have to be, uh, we have to be bonded to the single source, uh.
Not according to him. He said that he would prefer, I had him and Miranda on the phone together, they would prefer to have a dumpster at Pine Shores for recycling specifically. They were also supposed to deliver that but they just, yeah, today, and they, and.
They delivered one out here.
As of five P M. It hadn't shown up, number one, and number two, they did not fulfill their second promise, which was to empty out the recycling bin at Pine Shores, I say bin, it's a shed. So those were two things that they guaranteed me yesterday, and they are they've been informed that it didn't happen, and they assure me they're at all over it.
Hello, right.
So that's my scapegoat to that complaint, and I continue to follow it.
Question.
Yeah.
When you say dumpsters will be emptied on Monday, are those like at bins and garden drive, is that what you're talking about?
I'm, I'm in particular, speaking of. I'm, I'm in particular speaking about the one on.
Labrador Pond?
Labrador Pond Road and the ones in Pine Shores, but if.
The town dumpsters.
Town, okay, that's what I was asking.
I don't, I don't, I'm not talking about any other dumpsters. I don't know anything about Bims dumpsters or anything like that.
Well, I have a question about a dumpster. What's up with this one out here?
We're all kinda scratching our heads.
I think it's the insulation company.
Well, that's what I thought, but it.
They said no?
There's nothing in there and they had a lot of trash together. So, I don't, that's what I'm wondering, maybe Archie's goofed and.
I'll ask him tomorrow.
I can imagine how a dumpster placed in a spot like that, even if the town didn't water it up, how that would, would, uh, drive with snow a little bit.
Well, maybe they goofed too. Maybe this was supposed to be at Pine Shores instead of here.
But doesn't a dumpster have to be like, you know, labeled as recycling if it's a recycling dumpster? Because otherwise it's gonna pull up toward that.
It is definitely supposed to be labeled recycling, which that wasn't, right? I didn't see a sign on it that said recycling. We were all scratching our heads on why that's.
And you guys, I mean, my understanding about single sort recycling is that the town has to be, you know, I think we might have to be contracted with the single sort recycling facility, which is a multi-million dollar facility.
They were gonna create their own.
They were.
Talking about dumpsters. Isn't that, isn't that about the time we put one in Garden Drive?
That's good.
Don't we have one near it in winter time?
Yes. Yes, although there's absolutely nothing to prevent them from driving through there and picking up people's trash yet. Traditionally, Alan from Archie's Blessings Art and I, I gotta say, I'm missing. Uh, he was, this term, the term based on road conditions going it was, if they could no longer drive down McSherry Lane. And that was basically when those dumpsters would be set.
Well, just thinking, we might get snow early this year.
Well, did, did somebody?
Why, no?
Did somebody enlighten me as to why we do dumpsters sometimes over there and curbside the rest of the time?
Because there are roads that are too narrow and, uh, and privately plowed.
Why don't we just always do dumpsters over there?
That's what I suggested to Jerry, cause I drove down that road videotaping trash and it's one lane, very narrow.
I've been trying to figure that out for weeks now. I didn't, I, I take that back. I haven't done anything to figure it out, but I've been wondering.
In the winter time, that road just partially plowed.
Right, right, I would think, I would think that.
Well, how are they any different than Pine Shores though?
McSherry Lane, even, even back when, uh, oh, what was his name, used to plow it and he did a pretty good job and then he'd still like incredibly speed going up to the dairy road and, you know, Archie was just like, no, you're not doing this, no.
Well, okay, so. I guess I'm, I'm, I'm inclined to make the suggestion to Jerry, why didn't he, why wasn't he buying into that idea?
I mentioned it to him, he didn't say, yes, I will, or no, I won't.
Alright, so I'll put that on my next action item with him and maybe by months from now it will be.
It's gotta cost them less to dump a dumpster than it does to have to fly and go off.
So, I would think two dumpsters, well, how many residents are on that road? Can anybody answer that?
Full time, uh, there's quite a few houses down there. It goes a couple of miles.
Comparable in, in capacity to Pine Shores roughly?
There's quite a few.
About a dozen?
Pine Shores is huge.
You're saying a dozen?
Uh, let me look up how many addresses is.
Well, I guess ultimately my question is, is how many dumpsters and recycling dumpsters would it take? Cause right now Pine Shores has two dumpsters and a recycling shed. One. And does anybody kind of visual on what the capacity is for where this dumpster is? Is there enough room for two there?
Well, yeah.
They, they have two.
Yep.
They have two as it is.
Are you talking about Pine Shores?
Pine Shores has two dumpsters.
No, 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 I'm talking about Garden Drive.
Oh, Garden Drive, no.
Yeah, I think it's room enough for two there.
They only just had one, but people always had a hard time with what they do.
Well, I mean, for God's sakes, the amount of complaints we get out of Garden Drive is put in a dumpster there and be done with it.
We're talking about that, uh, trash and recycling.
There's twenty addresses on Garden Drive.
So, that's about less than half of Pine Shores. So, one dumpster and one recycling dumpster would be more than sufficient.
Yeah.
I, I was talking about West Cove and Beach, that's the one I went down.
Oh, yeah. Well.
But they probably use that too, like that.
Don't they get a dumpster as well?
In the winter, but they, that's the one that's really narrow.
Why don't we have dumpsters at all, at all of those private roads?
I would, I wouldn't drive a truck down that road.
But I, I guess prospectively, the people that live on those roads might feel like that we're shorting them.
You could change it.
You know, maybe.
Well, they complain when there's, the dumpster's not removed in the spring and then they complain in the summer that they should have a dumpster year round.
Have you heard that? Okay.
Yes.
So, maybe they were just prepared to have a dumpster.
Or maybe they just prefer to complain.
Well. Okay, so.
I mean, I didn't really, yeah, of course.
I wonder if they know where to put it.
Well, that's what I'm.
Yeah, they have spots.
Every, we could tell them where to put it. I know, I actually did, but.
Yeah, but Alan worked with us to pick it up to a good spot and, and they can't put it just anywhere because it's law, the property belongs to Larry Giroux. And we want it in certain places and I don't know the business space between that people. You would have to talk to the property owner before you made that kind of decision.
I think it's, um, not Larry Giroux. The auditor, Larry.
Campbell?
Yeah.
I'm pretty sure that was Larry Giroux's property, huh?
Who's this Larry Campbell with?
It is called.
On Garden Drive.
Are you trying, uh, I'm not listening while I'm typing, but I think what you're saying is that we need to get approval from the property owner to make it full year round versus seasonally?
It might be, that'd be a better idea to consult with the property owner before you, uh, you do that, yeah. And it might be a good idea to consult with the property owner before setting a second dumpster.
You know, when you make a left.
McSherry and Blueberry.
And you make another left and you come out across the road to Nancy Reed's house.
I think that's all Garden Drive.
The other thing is, uh, during the winter, um, the plant thrive and what the hell is the name of the road down on the end of there? Uh, you know, there's, there's two, there's a north and south of.
Narrow.
Narrow lane are, uh, like it's, it's a big T at the end of a plant. All the people down there use that dumpster as well because they don't have.
Yeah, I imagine, yeah. I mean, more than just Garden Drive.
So, it's a lot more than you think actually use that dumpster.
Well, it's true, we're just saying Garden Drive, cause.
You know, I mean, the size of the dumpster they put on Labrador Pond Road definitely does not need to be dumped every single week anymore.
Well, I don't wanna have them get confused, so they're gonna dump it every single week.
Right, you're right, but, but, uh, if they put the same size dumpster for twenty families, that is likely to be a lot more full.
Right.
So, but, uh, but the other thing is that a lot of the families on Garden Drive are seasonal residents.
So, my question ultimately is where, where else, like what triggers? Just because Archie's used to be on top of this, then you knew that it was time to put the dumpsters in, or do we tell them?
No, they do it on their own when the roads are too dangerous to drive down.
Okay, so they're not about to do it, I guess, and then where, where do we normally put them or where do, where do they normally put them? Other than Garden Drive, other than.
I have a list.
You have a list?
West Cove, yeah, West Cove and, uh.
So, the file cabinet behind John.
Well, that's fine, we can get it later. I was just wondering.
I sent it to Miranda, but I don't know if she ever got it.
Yeah, I don't, I, I guess. In each of those places, I've contemplated why not just do dumpsters in all those and you're saying that was your, you weren't just talking about Garden Drive. You're talking about all those places, right, okay, cause I'm, I'm in support of that idea.
It's up to them, you know, it's their company, yeah.
Right.
I would think it'd be easier for them.
Well, I think it would create less headache. Cause it's easier to remember to show up to empty a dumpster apparently than it is to drive down Garden Drive for some odd reason, I don't know. They had a lot of problems on Garden. Anyways, we can.
Well, people down there, there's a lot of complaints in Garden Drive.
So, is it?
It wasn't just Garden, it was Beachway, West Cove, I had just as many missed collections.
Yeah, right. Yeah, I guess I need that list after the meeting and then I'll kinda know what to how to pursue, but I'm just curious how people on those roads would accept the idea of just having a dumpster year round rather than having curbside people like that.
But it, it's true, if it's in their yard or something, they may wanna get permission first, be there all summer.
I remember, I remember when that one went in on Garden Drive and they got a specific homeowner's permission to put it there.
It'd be interesting if this comprehensive plan thing made it into the hands of all these people on those roads and then we get responsible about their preferred waste disposal methods. Anyways, moving forward, let's keep going on.
Okay. Town office leak chimney, is leaking again?
Yes, it's a continuous thing, it's been fixed, sealed, it was sealed last year. It didn't leak, it didn't leak yesterday, but last week it was like.
Oh, town office? Right, yeah, sorry, I thought you, I was thinking you were talking about over there, like why does she keep finding that?
No, last week it was just dripping right down here.
Where's the chimney?
Right behind this wall.
Wow, okay.
I have a little cup out there to catch water, but sometimes it comes on this side.
Alright, so.
But Mr. Laverty, who fit, worked on the chimney while I was gone years ago, stopped in today and he was, he said he'd look at it, like tomorrow, but I don't know if you're okay with him sealing it up or not.
I think it has to happen.
Go ahead and look at it.
Yeah, we, if, if he's gonna charge us, we can take the money out of that same fifty thousand.
I know, we have maintenance, but I would have to have insurance and should have a contract. I don't think our maintenance person.
Not first.
Yeah.
Is that, is John?
Yeah.
Yeah, right.
He's afraid of heights. Sorry, sorry, John.
Okay.
Yeah, that Laverty.
Yeah, okay.
Any appointments, let's meet, uh, Peggy? The, um, ad hoc comprehensive plan committee, uh, took a vote and we would like to have Susan Goulet removed from the membership of our committee because she has not uh, attended a meeting since June and she has not responded to multiple emails and uh, text messages to, uh, show an interest in participating in the committee by doing any kind of action related to the committee.
Okay.
So, we would like to ha, take her off the committee, but I guess you're the only ones who can appoint or disappoint people.
Disappoint, which is you're the only one?
Be a point.
Alright, listen, alright.
I think disappoint's a good feature.
Is it be a point?
No, it is.
Other members?
I don't, any other ones that you're looking to?
Disappoint, no. Um. Uh, we, we have draft minutes, if you wanna wait till we have the finalized minutes, you can see what, how the actual vote came out. Or I might decree we'd be able to find it after this. What's three one? Okay, I can remember, okay.
Would you want a list of officials? I don't think I put one in your pocket.
Well, I mean.
I thought it was kinda automatic when somebody just doesn't show up.
We don't have any rules. All those nice rules, I just looked them up under the municipal ordinance part two applies to all of the committees.
When the selectmen appoint a member to a committee, they are responsible for accepting their resignation also.
Or considering non-attendance.
And non-participation.
Effective.
Effective non-tension to the committee, cause I said.
Okay, so I, I agree, I understand with the appointment and the resignation acceptance, but at what point? If somebody hasn't been attending without good reason, like illness, do we remove them for not being?
And not responding to the test communication.
Ordinarily, it's to meetings.
Yeah, it's in our ordinance.
Okay, so we have an ordinance, so then this is pretty straightforward.
I think it includes ad hoc committees too.
No, it doesn't, and then municipal orders, I just checked, we have no rules of procedure, that's why I was bringing them to.
Oh, so you can't remove anybody from an ad hoc committee?
We, 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 we function under no rules of procedure. All the other rules that are listed for committees in the town are under, are listed. And it says specifically, ad hoc committees will function under no rules of procedure unless approved by the select board. That's why I've been keep bringing these rules to you because we don't have any rules.
Alright.
Wait, let me look.
We got a lot done because you kept grabbing your books over here. You, you, you said that to me earlier and you weren't wrong, it's helpful.
Yeah.
Well, we always do.
Yes, it was great.
It's just that being on the planning board, I have to read so much legislation and I have to look up so many laws and you have to go back and look at things, so I'm accustomed to trying to find the exact language all, all the time for stuff.
And I believe we're, the ordinance committee is tasked with cleaning up that language without ad hoc committees.
Oh, really? I don't know. Well, if we're not, we're not.
Okay, it says. It just says committees shall meet monthly as requested by the select board or, or as deemed necessary by the committee chair. A member who fails to attend three consecutive meetings of the respective committee shall be deemed to have submitted their resignation and the chair shall, shall inform the select. It just says committee, it doesn't say ad hoc.
But, but scroll down to where it says ad hoc. Ad hoc is two point three eight, look at two point three eight, it's this whole paragraph to itself.
But that paragraph that Leanne just read did not exclude ad hoc.
Right.
Therefore, it includes it.
Exactly. Right. So.
I'm gonna roll it out.
I think that makes sense. No, this is, comes under two point three seven, standing committees. The ad hoc committee is not a standing committee, that's why it's called ad hocs, you need to read the, read the two point three eight for that applies to ad hoc committees. I'm just saying, that's legally how.
It says boards, committees and authorities.
Are you reading two point three eight versus two point three seven?
Because it doesn't exclude ad hoc, it includes ad hoc.
This is section.
No, it says the following shall apply to the road committee, cemetery committee, ordinance committee and solid waste committee and the recycling committee, the existing road committee ordinance, and I don't know why this hasn't been removed. Cemetery committee ordinance, ordinance committee ordinance and solid waste recycling committee ordinance are hereby repealed. That's what it says on the webs, from the website and the, uh.
Well, we, there was an ordinance for every committee and we got rid of, right, all under an umbrella, right, cause it was.
But so, so that thirty-seven deals with all of those committees and it says committees is talking about the ones that remain. And the next section says ad hoc committees, so that prior does not refer to the next one. I'm just saying, that's, that's how legal systems work.
It's all under section five, boards, committees, authorities.
Yep. If it is excluded, it's included.
It is, so need to. So, well, I, I'll, next time I see my lawyer asking this question too.
I don't think you need, I, I think we can interpret.
How hard could, maybe it's harder for me to read.
Comprehensive plan review committee is their, AKA ADHOCs.
Yes.
Okay, so what we're looking at is Kathy Landry, Leanne.
Um.
Huh?
No, no.
No, 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 it's the ad hoc, the ad hoc committee.
The, the, what's listed on the website has been erroneous for a while.
Okay, so, we were, okay, that makes, okay, thank you. Alright, then the only member, the only man on here that is not actively engaged in this group is Susan Goulet, from what I can see.
Yes, yes, is Bim on there yet?
No.
Did he come in and do the oath?
He wasn't appointed, was he?
Yes, Peggy found him in minutes, right?
He's in the minutes.
Yeah, but they.
Oh, he was in the minutes of the, uh, well, that was when they were trying to get rid of Bim for everything, so what, his name was exclu, was the only name that was excluded.
Cause he didn't, he didn't attend.
Comprehensive plan review.
Right, but he never attended, I think, so they didn't appoint him to the ad hoc.
This, this name, this comprehensive review committee has all kinds of.
So, how do we get Bim? He comes to our meetings of the ad hoc comprehensive planning committee. How do we make that official? Now, I'm not even listening, we don't have any rules, so we could let anybody come to vote, right, but they need to be listed.
Letting he's on the list.
I am, oh, yeah.
Anyway.
Wait, I'm not on the website, or maybe that's me.
Go ahead.
It's up to the select board to appoint committee members.
Well, I suggest to appoint Bim and let him sign, sign up.
Does he need to sign the paper in order for us to do so?
No.
No, you're appointing.
You're appointing him and he comes and shows up and signs.
Alright, I make a motion to remove Susan Goulet from the ad hoc comprehensive plan committee.
Let's second it.
Oh.
Favor.
Okay.
You appoint Bim.
I make a motion to appoint Bim McNeil to the ad hoc comprehensive plan committee.
Let's second it. No favor?
Alright, are we good to move on?
Okay, help though. The ballot clerk. Special nation.
Do we, do we, you didn't have anything else in that book, Leanne, did you? I didn't see the book.
What's that? Um, the bonds to your bond?
Yeah.
Oh, Bridgette, she doesn't. Can I send her a mail?
Nope, nothing.
She's ballot, she's a little ballot, she gives every bond up, no, she hasn't signed up.
They're boxing in here, taking their shoes off.
Well, she appointed? So, when she's appointed, she can just show up.
Okay, so.
Ballot clerk.
I didn't give it to you?
I didn't, I don't know.
Oh.
Anything? I make a motion to accept the resignation from Kathy Ontario as ballot clerk.
Let's second it.
No favor? Could we ask to have Bridget Colleton appointed to the ad hoc comprehensive planning committee?
We could, there's anybody.
She's indicated in that, but she didn't respond to my email, I know, I dropped her.
Can you, you wanna give her a form? That way, that way I have all the information.
Yes, yes, I certainly will.
That's for Bim.
On the twenty seventh.
It's actually a volunteer form.
You know, I'll take one for Bim too.
I know his information.
Seems old, you know, when we, uh, when we were counting ballots this past June, somebody didn't know that Alan McNeil was Bim.
I didn't do that.
And put him in as a red one.
So I make a motion to appoint Bridget Colton, Colleton to the ad hoc comprehensive plan committee.
Let's second it. I'll trade them.
I have a question though, what, when we're appointing people without them being there, we're basing it on the word that they're gonna be intending to participate.
Bim has appointed.
No, I understand, but Bridget, we're going on the fact that.
Bridget told me she couldn't come the eighth cause she had a prior requirement that she'd be there the twenty seventh.
Alright, there you go, sounds good, this, that, that makes me feel better when I'm appointing someone.
I have it right here, I can't do the eighth, I have a time. Done. Oh, training.
What date was that?
Training. Pretty sure he's an expert in training by now, right?
Um, I think Morrell Nathan wanted to go to that.
Oh.
Lawled it?
Yes.
Yeah.
He said he wanted to go if there was room, and they just added another class in December, so there should be.
You wanna go to the oven one? Probably.
Um, I don't know, they added another one in December because these were getting full, so I'm not sure.
Well, I make a motion to let Morrell Nathan participate in this drainage training.
For fifty dollars?
With minus fifty dollars.
I second that motion.
No favor? Is that the nearest school or?
Local road center.
I say we pay them the exact attention we're charging for. Say we get charged for.
I don't know what's in your pocket, what came later.
Wow. You have to get all these. That looks like. Now, this American flag here, I heard Dorine talk the other day about we need to replace their flag over here to the museum. You hear her talk about that, Lenny, I think she said something about she's pretty sure that Leslie was gonna find a flag in the pole and.
How can you get a free one from your representative?
Flag?
Flag.
But they need to pull too, cause that one is rotting out. It says here.
Nonetheless, you can still get a flag from your representative.
Each kit includes three feet by five foot solid nylon American flag, six foot spinning flag pole.
Six foot spinning, a six foot spinning flag pole.
Makes it really tall.
Spinning?
Does that mean you can put it in the corner of this room with you?
Spinning?
Six inch?
No, it says six foot spinning flag pole.
Spinning flag pole? Doesn't sound tall enough for a flag pole.
Well, it sounds like.
It's probably one that goes on a building or outside.
I think that's.
Yeah, probably right, yeah.
Let's see.
That would be under the input there.
Three by five flag things off these large, you're putting on telephone poles in the community center, right?
No.
No?
Three by five is not very big, I don't think.
Not very big.
No, it ends up looking dinky once it's up there.
Well, it's probably like the same size as most residential flags in the, right?
Probably, but for a pole of only had out there, it looked really dinky.
Well, you're right, that's, number of flaggers.
This is in front of the museum or in front of the town?
Well, I guess, I was trying to figure out if, if, if we were entertaining this, it'd be to put a flag pole, flags among, among, among an area.
As I've said before, if it's gonna be in the, this area, we really need a plan of how we're gonna, we want this whole land to be. Just put one thing here, then come back to something else.
Well, no, but I think it's like, this seems more like it's not for a, we, don't we have a flag pole on recovery?
No.
This is just correspondence, it's not on the agenda.
No, yeah, this is what I'm asking, if somebody was interested in taking advantage of this, I think this is more like when you do the neighborhood parade and you put flags up along the community center.
Yeah.
So, that's how I'm looking at this. Anyways, okay.
The only disadvantage to meeting here is after.
Let's read here.
Yeah. Is there somebody who will permit Lenny and I enter the town hall on Thursday afternoon so we can start scanning?
They're insulating the hall.
Oh, yeah.
And you don't wanna breathe that, it's, I just walk over there and I feel like it's everywhere.
Yeah, we'll be a lesson.
Okay, well then, I'm, I'm gonna come tomorrow and we have a pile like this that we had started to take all the staples out of, and I'll bring, I'll bring them to my house and scan them and bring them back, if that's acceptable.
I mean.
Are they confidential?
You know, nothing is supposed to leave town property.
Okay.
You had, you said it.
Okay.
I think we're gonna have to wait a week.
Yeah, just wait, yeah, that'd be good.
That's sorry, I have it on my schedule.
Multi-thinking about something else and it's going past me. I think, I think we could wait till we can do it at the town hall, that'd be the best recommendation.
Well, yeah, that was, put a pretty scanner there was the plan.
Right.
It should be done by next week.
Okay.
That's it, isn't it?
Agenda items for next meeting?
No, yeah.
Oh, yeah, okay.
I have the assessors on my next agenda.
Yep.
Hopefully we have taxes all committed, there's no really leeway, so we might do it before the meeting.
You got the condo or like the pole, well this.
Yep, CMP mast.
That's all in time, it's the same whole topic, right?
I, I put CMP mast for hall, I can put pole relocation.
No, no, you're fine, you, don't worry about it. It all, it all kinda gets encompassed under one or the other, so. Is that yours?
Well, okay, so.
I can't think of anything else, in January, we're gonna start working on each policy, town meet, planning for town meeting and all that.
Yep.
Which is, we'll be here before we know it.
Right.
Thank you. They live like this in Chaucer's England, oh, thank you.
What's that?
What about that?
Yeah. Just, let's wait till the meetings are over.
Sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
I think, I, I can't think of anything else to add to the agenda. But I'll let you know by probably.
Okay. Mike will probably take up a good chunk of time.
Yeah.
If, cause I know there were questions. About the process of.
So then you have to.
Um, Nick, you were gonna bring, is, hold on, I can talk.
Is that good?
Aaron will be back, correct?
Next two weeks.
So you're gonna talk about committee reports?
Well, he'll be back on Monday, but, or Saturday or something, what, what do you mean, committee report?
You said, you said you wanted to talk about that with the full board.
Okay.
Can you add that? Yeah, thank you, Lee, Lee.
Lenny.
I'm tired.
I, I see this, I could give you.
My eyes are starting to glaze over until my contacts are so dry.
Oh, man.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Don't that say. Love me, huh?
I hear ya.
Yeah. Alright. Again?
Get the good thing out. This will good.
Thank you all.
To Johnny fifty.
This is on the twenty nine, um.
Fifty five.
You know, I actually thought something I might wanna have on there, uh, uh, just, just put waste committee requests.
Waste committee?
Request, just, it can be.
Solid waste or recycling committee.
Solid waste and recycling committee, uh, requests.
Do you wanna email the information so they have it for the packet?
Uh, well, we're not gonna be meeting until, we're not gonna be meeting until the twenty ninth, so I guess I will just say, put solid waste committee request, or solid waste and recycling committee request.
Okay.
And then you'll get to hear from us.
Alright, sounds good.
And if we, if we end up having a meeting and we don't come up with something to request, then we will strike that and it'll be all set. But this way, we've got a toe in the door because now there's no longer a place for the waste committee to sit and talk and talk about something or make a request or ask anything because now you don't have a space for waste committee, all you have is waste committee full of members, so we don't get to speak up. And, and also, we're gonna finish the, uh, ad hoc have comprehensive plan committee rules of procedure, cause we have to change the name on the.
That's right.
Yes, same as fun.
There you go.
I think it's good.
Well, I mean, I mean, like overall.
Oh, come on, very, come on.
Well, I was, uh, wearing two hats over the last two months, and I just got rid of one on October first, and I would have more energy and focus on myself.
Excellent.
I was a little overwhelmed when the entire thing's going.
I'll email.
Leanne, Mary was this?
Yep.
Oh, I just remembered it. For the Hartford News, we have addresses and all we have for a name is resident. If I give you those addresses, do you have names?
So that way?
Yeah, I can look them up.
Okay, I've got a list at home, I'll bring it in.
Yeah.
I know you're off tomorrow, I'll try to remember.
No, I'm working tomorrow.
You're working.
I thought I was off tomorrow until someone reminded me it was Wednesday.
Oh, oh, it is Wednesday. I was all excited too.
Summer, doesn't like making plans that you.
That's a pretty comfy chair.
No kidding?
Just so you know, they got it stuck sitting in it, so yeah.